We could come to order, please. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, September 14th, 2017, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2017 Agenda Resolution of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the second day of December 2016. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 9th, 2016, edition of the Princeton Packet. Did you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizole, Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Crumiller.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Ms. Spurle.
Mr. Texarney.
Here.
Mrs. Trotman.
Here.
Mrs. Ullman.
Here.
Mrs. Gunning.
Here.
Mr. Williamson.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. A couple of announcements, and maybe Ms. Ullman would like to chime in on this. The Master Planning Committee is working on scheduling a daytime meeting on October 11th to discuss, first of all, the Circulation Element Amendment, which we had on the agenda for Planning Board earlier and is going back to committee for work, and the new draft reexamination report, which is due at the end of this month. Ms. Ullman, do you want to say anything about this?
Well, we're going to try to get through a sizable agenda in two hours. One of the issues that will certainly come up in the first part when we talk about the circulation element is the concern that many people attending this group have expressed about the provision concerning West Drive in the circulation element. And so we want to have a discussion about that, hear what people have to think, think it over, and come to some conclusion. So those of you who may be interested in that subject, stay in touch with us. We're trying to get that date pinned down, probably nine o'clock if we do it, because we're having trouble cramming everything in for the next few months. But we really do want to talk that through, as through as we can, in the hour that we'll have, and so we hope you will come and speak.
Do we have dates?
It's October 11th, if it works. I mean, so far, we haven't been able to absolutely assure it.
Thank you very much. Let me just ask, are there any other announcements, anyone? All right, then let's move on to the resolution and the findings of fact. The first resolution is a request for professional services agreement, and this is for Jonathan Drill Esquire. This is for the Brong Education Institution. Does anyone have any questions about that?
I'll move it.
Thank you very much. It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Now, we have a, let's see, for the charter school, did you want to say something about that either? Okay, this was a findings of fact, this is a conditional use, Section 31, and a reasonableness review. I think you all got the, this electronically, were there any questions? Okay, I'm looking, just to see who's eligible to vote on this. Okay, those who were present were Ms. Capizole, Mr. Cohen, myself, Mr. Texarney, Ms. Trotman, Ms. Ullman, Mr. Williamson, and Ms. Wilson. So would one of you like to move acceptance of that?
I will move acceptance.
Second? Anyone?
My second.
Thank you, Louise. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carry. All right, let's move on to the minutes, and the minutes of the special meeting of June 29th. We've received some edits for that, so why don't we table that? It'll come back at another meeting. And the subdivision committee, myself, Ms. Capizole, and Mr. Williamson, I'm not sure how this works. Can I just approve it, or should we also hold that?
Tim is there.
Since I didn't take action, we're the ones that proposed. Why don't you just?
Okay, well, I'm going to move it and move approval of it, and if there are any questions about it, then we'll come back to it some other time. All right, let's move on to the hearings, and let me announce that Camp and Gown, the Planning Board, is going to accept jurisdiction of this application and give it an extension. They provided us with an extension through October 20th, and it's tentatively scheduled for the October 19th agenda, so it will not be re-noticed. If you're here for that application, I'm sorry this is such short notice. And the other application that will not be heard tonight is the Gardner and Asplunda. This was an appeal of an HPC decision on the Tusculum Fin, and that also, we've received an extension through October 20th, and it's scheduled for the October 19th agenda, and there will be no
September. I'm sorry.
No further noticing. So if there are
Just for the record, saying that we have accepted jurisdiction and those are carried to the October 19th meeting.
Great. All right, that brings us to the main item for this evening, which is the Institute for Advanced Study, and this is continued from June 15th of this year. It's a major site plan with variances, and
Mr. Porter, did you want?
Just one variance.
Just one variance, okay.
Just want to reiterate what Ms. Ullman said, that the hearing tonight will not involve any issues regarding West Drive.
All right. I think when we stopped this hearing, or adjourned it earlier, we were just about at the point of having the public part of the meeting, so if you remember, the circulation element had been on the same agenda, and there were people here with their attorneys who wanted to address points on the circulation element, and they briefly addressed that. But tonight, we are just hearing the institute application, and the public portion of the meeting is for people who want to comment on that, who have questions that they'd like to ask about this, and of course, it's also a chance for the attorneys, for the public to come forward and ask questions of the applicant. So without further ado, let's open it up to the public, and if you'll come forward and give your name.
Not very well.
No? No.
You have to be recorded.
Sorry about that. My name is Bill Potter. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Potter &amp; Dixon. This is now our 20th year on Nassau Street. Aren't too many law firms left on Nassau Street, but we're still there. And we're representing the group known as Spina, Springdale, Institute, Neighborhood Association. And we are, we have been working on a concept plan for alternative circulation of the traffic down Olden Lane and into and out of the Institute for Advanced Studies with respect to the proposed new addition. We have several people who wish to testify, and we also have an expert witness in Mr. Hal Simoff. Hal, would you stand up, please? He has developed a different, a slightly modified, well, I would actually say substantially modified, plan for ingress and egress into the institute, so as to protect the homes, the children, the people living on Olden Lane from the constant flow of traffic down that 24-foot-wide road that does not even have a center line in the middle of it. So I think we've got Carl Mayer, is he here? Carl has been very active with the association, and he's going to testify about the overall background and position that we have. Carl, I assume that he'll be sworn in?
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, Mr. Mayer, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully tonight?
I do.
Thank you. You want to state your name and spell it for the record?
Sure. My name is Carl J. Mayer. So lap. Chair Gunning, Vice Chair Ullman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard this evening. When we last convened, there was some testimony about the consequences of the various building projects that the institute has undertaken, and the new one that they are attempting to undertake. The critical concern of the neighborhood is the traffic. You heard some testimony at the last session, which indicated that the streets in our neighborhood, which are designed for neighborhood use, enjoyment, which are not high circulation streets, weren't designed that way, have been inundated by commercial traffic as a result of institute projects. I know there has been some discussions over the summer, and we're aware, as a neighborhood, of the letter to the chair regarding measures that the institute has taken to tamp down some of the traffic issues in the neighborhood, which the neighbors are appreciative of. However, I come to testify today to give my personal observations about the traffic that still is in the neighborhood. I, like many members of the neighborhood, stand at the intersection of Olden and Battle Road every morning, dropping off schoolchildren to the school buses, and as a consequence, I can observe, and our neighbors observe, the traffic that comes down Olden Lane. And I can testify personally that since Labor Day, since we've reconvened, and even after the institute's traffic calming measures that they've taken, there is still, every morning, since Labor Day, there's still commercial traffic going down Olden Lane, sometimes under the speed limit, sometimes over the speed limit, on a lane that has, it has no white line, it is narrow, it has no sidewalk, and every morning, children are walking from neighboring streets, from Olden, Haslet, Newland, on Olden at the same time as large commercial vehicles, that most often are heading to the institute. And again, I will testify to my personal observations. I'll give you an example. Two days ago, I was standing approximately eight o'clock in the morning. On that intersection, there is a large commercial vehicle, let me make sure I get the name right, I think the name was Johnny on the Spot, commercial vehicle, which is one of those vehicles that changes the porta-potties, the construction, the construction toilets, and that came down, and came down the street while the children were walking on Olden, turned into the institute, which has active construction sites, and I, that is the type of traffic that institute construction has brought to the neighborhood, which is not compatible with the neighborhood, that interferes with the use and enjoyment of people's homes, interferes with their quietude, reduces property values, but most importantly, this is a public safety hazard, because these trucks, the cab of these trucks sit up high. So unlike ordinary vehicles, you don't have the opportunity to see small children when they're obscured, and seeing small children walking down Olden Lane. Another vehicle I saw was a, I believe the name of it is Blue Apron Farms. It was a, one of these box trucks, which delivers food. I again observed, this was yesterday, I observed the truck coming down Olden and taking a right on Einstein Drive into the institute, which it must be designed for kitchen purposes. In any event, there's been a lot of testimony on this issue, and we'll have more, but the neighbors are deeply concerned about this, and deeply concerned about the safety of the neighborhood. We're not looking to get into a Donnybrook with the institute, rather, the neighborhoods, the neighbors have gotten together and devised what we think is a solution to this issue that benefits everyone. And the traffic expert will speak later this evening about that and explicate the solution in more detail. But the concept is very, very simple. There are only four entrances to the Institute for Advanced Study, and their driveway, which is Einstein Drive. There's one on Maxwell Lane, there's two on Olden, there's one on Battle. And our proposal is as simple as pie. It's to block off or cul-de-sac the three entrances, two on Olden and one on Battle, which would leave only one entrance on Maxwell Lane. That would solve, I believe, and I think a near-unanimous group of the neighbors believe, that would solve all these issues, because there would then be no incentive for commercial traffic to go down Olden Lane, or to go down Battle Road. There would be none whatsoever. Commercial traffic would be routed towards Maxwell. This is not a radical proposal. This is actually a tried and true proposal. This is what the university did on Nassau Street years ago. There used to be two entrances to Princeton University on Nassau, one right near Firestone, one right next to the church on Nassau. And a few years ago, probably about 15 years ago, the university closed those two entrances. They left one with a gate, the other was permanently closed, and all traffic was shunted around the back to Faculty Road, so as to alleviate the traffic issues on Nassau Street. And what I submit to the Planning Board is that this is a win-win-win-win solution, because it not only solves the problem for the neighbors, they don't have this commercial traffic going through their neighborhood, number one, but number two, for the institute. They don't have to then monitor and receive notes, and letters, and emails, and complaints from the neighbors. They don't have to monitor the traffic, they don't have to worry about speed bumps, or signs, or et cetera. The configuration takes care of itself. It solves the problem at the root. It is a very simple, very neat solution, and we've presented that solution initially to the institute on the conference call on September 7th. They were nice enough to listen to it, they asked for more details, we provided them more details. Our traffic expert, Mr. Simoff, is going to present more details to the board this morning. I also note, I described four wins. There's a win for the neighborhood, a win for the institute, it's a win for the Planning Board, too, because then, if we had this configuration, the neighbors wouldn't have to come back to the Planning Board and say, hey, look at the impact on our neighborhood of this project or that project. We wouldn't have to go to the governing body. That's the fourth win, is the neighbors put in a request for an ordinance that would prohibit commercial truck traffic over a certain amount on Olden. That's sitting before the governing body. So we stand ready, as we did last time, to work with the institute to solve, to solve this problem in what we think is a creative fashion. There are also, you know, there are sort of adjustments you can make. For example, the university does have that guard booth right on Nassau Street, and if people have a special need or reason to go in through Nassau Street, they go in. The same could be done at the institute, if faculty members, or retired faculty members, or handicapped people, or whatever group might need to get into the institute at a certain time, they could go through a guard gate for special access. But what this solution does is, it solves the problem at its root. It's tried and true, and tested at the university level, and this is our proposal. And we hope that the, that the board would allow us further time to sit down with the institute and explore this proposal further, and try to work this out, so that we wouldn't have to come back to the board. And in addition, the neighbors are also, I believe, nearly unanimous, that if we could work out a traffic configuration such as this, there wouldn't be any opposition in the neighborhood to future projects of the institute. Because what's happened here is, the institute has grown in size and magnitude, which is However, what ought not to happen is that the burden of whatever projects are on institute property should be borne by the neighbors on public streets. What our solution achieves is, the traffic is directed through Maxwell, which is off of Mercer, which is a high, it's a high-density traffic street. It's intended to carry that traffic, unlike Olden Lane, and it solves the problem that way. And then if the institute wants to have two, four, six, eight, however many conference centers they want, or additions to faculty housing, or anything that the institute can think of, they would, they would have the traffic circulating in their own spheres, so to speak. And then they could control it, too. So if they wanted to put sidewalks on Einstein Drive, they've already sidewalked part of Einstein Drive. If they wanted to put additional sidewalks, if they wanted to stagger the deliveries, they could all do this without having to involve the Planning Board, the governing body, the neighbors, and to us, this seems like the superior solution. I should also note that if we, you know, the institute traffic expert testified extensively last time, that there wasn't that much of a traffic burden from the project that they are now proposing. If that's the case, why not accept our solution? If they believe that, then they're not burdening themselves very much, because their expert has already said, there's not going to be a great traffic impact. So obviously, we as neighbors feel there is a huge traffic impact. But if they don't believe that, and their expert testifies that there isn't, then they should be able to handle the traffic internally. And that is our proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions about what is going on in terms of traffic in the neighborhood. I will say that you not only have Olden, but you have Springdale and Battle, and what happens every morning, and this is only in a small window that the neighbors observe, I think some other neighbors tonight will testify about other windows of time when there is this traffic, but what happens is, like water, the traffic seeks the lowest level. So you have construction traffic that comes down, like, you have, you have these construction vehicles or trade vehicles that come down Olden, and rather than go all the way down Olden to the institute, they'll cut down Battle and go around Battle Circle, because it's quicker. Or they'll go down Olden, take a right on Einstein. So every day, the neighborhood is inundated with this, and we're simply doing what I think anyone on the panel would do, what I think anyone would do in a neighborhood in Princeton, we're trying to protect the neighborhood, and most importantly, protect the children, the neighbors, the public safety, and we think we've done, we've spent a lot of time and consideration and thought trying to come up with a proposal that's workable for everyone. So I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Have you talked about sidewalks on Olden with the institute? I mean, doesn't it seem like a sidewalk would make it a lot safer for children, if there are lots of children walking up to the bus stop? There, you know, it's on our sidewalk master plan.
So the question is, have we talked about?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I was wondering, the town isn't putting in sidewalks where, when we're not doing road projects, but perhaps if the institute was willing to help, we could get sidewalk, maybe that, that might be something the institute might contribute to.
It's still, that would only solve part of the problem. It wouldn't solve the speeding problem, it wouldn't solve the, there's no residential neighborhood that wants a Johnny-on-the-spot sewage truck going down their streets, there's no
No, no, I was just asking about the sidewalks. I heard your other points, you made good points.
Right. We haven't
I just haven't heard any talk about the sidewalk, and to me, one, even if the institute, even if you get your, this plan goes forward, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a street that's used by walkers that doesn't have a sidewalk, and the town has been being more aggressive about putting in sidewalks. We've changed our sidewalk policy so that the town funds them rather than homeowners, and so it's a little more well-received, because the town wants to make the town more walkable, and part of that is putting in sidewalks.
That's, that's a fantastic idea, and if, certainly, the neighbors would take that as a friendly amendment to the plan, to not only cut off the access, but to add sidewalks would be terrific. But there's no way that just putting sidewalks would solve the problem, because you still
I wasn't implying that.
Right, very good. Then, then, that's a fantastic suggestion. I don't know, I didn't know until you told me who has jurisdiction over the sidewalks, and let us know where we fill out the application.
Right. David, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had, I guess, a similar question. Have you had a conversation about this proposed plan with Sergeant Murray? Because I know we heard testimony last time that he had concerns about trucks being, some trucks being unable to negotiate the turn from Lover's Lane onto Mercer Street, Princeton Pike, and that Princeton Pike is not rated, you know, there's a bridge further down that wouldn't accept heavy trucks. So I know that it's not just a question of how the institute feels. Have you had that conversation?
I have not. That is another terrific suggestion, and actually, you know, raises a good point we, that I didn't get to earlier. That's, that's a fantastic suggestion. We will do that posthaste, simultaneously in getting the sidewalk application. I know a lot of the concern from the neighbors is, for example, you mentioned the intersection of Lover's Lane and Mercer and Olden. That intersection has a light, so at the end of the day, almost all the traffic now goes out of Olden, because people who are at the institute, whether in the construction site or wherever, they feel they can't take a left turn onto Mercer, because there's no light there. So, so one of the elements to what we're proposing, too, we'd love to work with the institute, the board, the governing body to try to, and the county, to try to get either a light there, or do what the university did when it changed its main entrance to Faculty Road. What it did, what it did there is it created a roundabout, so there, you know, traffic could circulate, and there wouldn't be, you know, you could, you could make the turn in or out, so that there would be circulation during the end of the day. be circulation during the end of the day.
Any other...
Yeah, I have a quick question. So could you talk a little bit more about how you're planning on or proposing to block traffic from the other roads? So you said cul-de-sacking, but, I mean, would it be a barrier, or...
Well, Mr. Simoff's going to talk about that early. I mean, I think, and he'll talk about that in more detail, you'd have to have access for emergency vehicles, it would be very important. It could be a barrier, it could be like the university has, a guard gate with a staff guard, it could be a cul-de-sac. All those are details that could be worked out, but we really like the overall proposal. We think it's based in precedent, it's sound, it's well-reasoned, and I hope it gets everyone home.
Anyone else? Okay, you have...
Thank you.
Another witness?
I neglected to mention that my co-counsel is someone that you don't know anything about and you've never heard of before. His name is Bruce Afran. Bruce, I think is here.
Thank you. I am working with Bill, we're co-counsel for the Association. I could just answer that last question if I can. Mr. Simoff will address this, but the cul-de...
I guess...
I'm sorry.
Well, if we're having testimony, maybe everybody who talks should be sworn in. Bruce, do you swear? Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I do.
And Mr. Potter, to the extent you have or will testify?
Well, I wasn't planning to be a witness, but I will certainly swear or affirm that I will tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that last comment, which is very important, because how would these cul-de-sacs be structured? Mr. Simoff will address that, but one of the major concepts is it would be sloping Belgian block, which defines the cul-de-sac but does not impede emergency vehicles. In fact, on the Battlefield project, it was actually that very type of structure that's used in the cul-de-sac, because the fire marshal wants the ability of emergency vehicles to be able to go on that slope and make a turn. So this would be the same type of concept, and it's designed to allow all vehicles to go over it smoothly in an emergency. It simply defines the cul-de-sac visually. So Mrs. Simoff will talk more about that.
I'm popping up like popcorn here. We also have Ms. Lisa Seresol, who's one of the leaders of SPINA, and she's been taking some traffic counts, and she will testify as a fact witness at this time. Lisa?
I need to be sworn in?
Yep. Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully? I guess some of you all have been sworn in at the prior hearing, but let's continue this process.
I do.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for receiving us today. Obviously, this is a heartfelt issue for all of us, and particularly for me and my family. We live at 98 Olden Lane in Princeton, my husband, my son, and our dogs. It's at the corner of Olden Lane and Over Road, so much of the traffic issues that filter down towards the Institute go right past our house. Some of you also know I'm a member of the Princeton Bicycle Advisory Committee, and I serve as the Safe Routes to School Coordinator. In that capacity, I have organized and participated in walks and bikes to school for Johnson Park School, for Riverside School, for John Witherspoon School, that have involved hundreds and hundreds of children over the past five years. I am very aware of traffic safety and the safety of our children walking and biking on Princeton streets, and that's why I'm here tonight, because it's of the utmost importance to me. Starting in July of last year, 2016, I began recording on an Excel spreadsheet, call me old-school, the truck traffic I observed, and members of my neighbors also observed, going through our residential streets. This was following the findings of fact for the Simons Dining Hall that was voted by the Princeton Planning Board July 14, 2016. The spreadsheet has been a compilation of the observations of me and many of the neighbors that we refer to as the school bus stop, but also neighbors from Springdale, from Hazlet, so really all over the place. It has been updated and emailed on a regular basis to the Institute's Chief Facilities Officer, Bill Gripp, and to Sergeant Murray, Traffic Safety Officer. The spreadsheet now has over 380 entries of each individual observation. It's a testimony to the fact that there is a problem with truck traffic even today. Over this time, I have received many constructive responses from Bill Gripp and Sergeant Murray. However, the truck traffic continues. When our neighbor Boot Seam saw the spreadsheet, he said to me, we should put a camera up, and he did so on his front yard, actually backyard, sorry. And those are the photos that you saw back in June. Since June, the IAS has set up cameras of its own on Olden Lane, down near Einstein, at various points. In August, the Institute's Public Safety Officers were monitoring commercial truck traffic on Olden Lane, and they parked right in front of my house. They were parked there from 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 PM, or thereabouts. They would stop any vehicle that had a commercial plate. However, August is a low period for the Institute, as I've observed, having lived there for eight years. So the number of vehicles that would come in to service the activities going on at the Institute is low in comparison to September through December, January through July. Olden Lane is a 24-foot, plus or minus foot wide street. There are no sidewalks, there are no streetlights, there are no shoulders. When visitors come to a house that is fronted on Olden Lane, the visitors park on Olden Lane, therefore, the road narrows. When we pile up our leaves for collection, the roads narrow. When snow collects after being plowed, it causes the road to narrow. So we're already talking about a small road with no separating line in the middle, no sidewalks, and throughout the seasons, it has many reasons to be much less than 24 feet It is a street, however, that's a residential street, and there are families who like to walk there, children who ride their bikes for the very first time. There's a hill that's quite tricky, and if they need to, instead of going straight up the hill, because clearly they don't have that balance, they have to weave back and forth. That's not a very safe thing to do on Olden Lane. There are elderly people, they sometimes walk with walkers or keens, they are sometimes pushed in wheelchairs, and all of this goes right past my window, right past our house. I have compiled this spreadsheet, I have a copy of it that I can leave with the Board tonight.
Could we have that spreadsheet marked as an exhibit?
Could you hear the description of what it is again? Is this your own observation?
It's mine, plus our neighbors that are here tonight, who have observed truck traffic inbound, outbound, on Olden Lane, Springdale.
Well, it's really, I think you can only testify properly about your observations. So why don't you continue to testify orally, since that document seems to include the observations of other people who aren't here?
No, they are here.
Well, who aren't testifying?
Then it would be Deepak Jain...
Are they...
Andrew Sutphen, Karen Zembel, and Carl Mayer. They're all here tonight.
So all the observations are from people who are here?
Yes.
That's what she said.
Okay. Well, maybe if you can just have those march up and confirm that those are theirs, and put that on the record, then we'd mark that.
We'll put that on the record, and it'll be Exhibit 1.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Alan.
To conclude...
Oh, okay, sorry.
Why don't we swear you all in collectively, and then if you go to the microphone and state your name for the record, and affirm that the sheet that we're about to see is partially your observations?
Yes. My name is Deepak Jain, and I live at 76 Battle Road, and those are my observations.
And do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Zembel, I'm at 58 Battle Road, and yes, I provided some observations for this list.
And you swear or affirm truthfully?
Yes.
Swear or affirm to testify?
Hi, my name's Andy Sutphen, I live at 37 Olden Lane, and I swear to tell the truth. And my observations were truthful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Mayer of 58 Battle Road, I was already sworn in, but, you know, I'm a lawyer, you might want to swear me in twice, I don't know, but I do swear that my observations are truthful, I do swear that my observations are truthful, and I put them, I forwarded them to Lisa, who put them in the spreadsheet.
Okay, let's, we can mark that as, I think, do we have any O exhibits?
Can we have that as...
As O1.
Rather than O, how about Spina?
O for objection.
How about a Spina Exhibit 1? That's the name of the Association.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Not to be picky, but could that be listed as Spina Exhibit 1, S-P-I-N-A, for the...
No, we list exhibits from objectors under the O category.
Well, we don't like to be called objectors.
Okay. We'll call it O1. Do we have one already? Okay. All right. I think this, let's see, last time we had a slideshow, that might have been marked O1. Why don't we mark it O1 with this date?
I can make another copy for you.
Excuse me, Mr. Porter, I don't have page numbers on this, do you have a...
I'm sorry...
We have one copy.
Alan, with the Board's indulgence, could we have a copy, photocopy made of this spreadsheet, so that Chris Tark could have a copy at this present time?
I don't, we don't have a copy here. Okay. Do you have a digital version?
You don't have the most recent observations, but I have them sent to you.
Lisa, do you have this online?
I have it online.
Could you send it to...
Yes.
Okay.
Chris would, where did Chris go? Oh, there you are. Is that adequate for you? If she emails it to you?
The board doesn't have it, I don't have it, so she says it as she entered the DM system. We'll accept that.
Well, thank you.
So, to conclude, the proposal that you will hear tonight, suggested by our traffic engineer, Hal Simoff, would take care of a lot of the issues that we are fighting to keep our streets safe, and the redirection of traffic to Maxwell Lane has been working, but it's not foolproof. Obviously, that 11-page document of observations is not something I want to carry on with. I know that the Institute has put up its own cameras, but a camera watching the traffic is only going to capture the moment, and then it's a chase to go enforce it. And we're trying to find a solution that brings our street back to a normal residential condition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Are there questions?
Did anyone have any questions from Seresol? Anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rather than having me jump up and down each time, we have several people who are members of the, or residents living in the area who wish to testify, and perhaps they could just come up on a, one at a time, on a volunteer basis. Would that be acceptable, Madam Chair?
That sounds like...
Thank you.
Yeah. I think that maybe, at this point, we need to say that your testimony should be no more than five or six minutes, so that we get through everyone, and so it's not repetitive.
I agree with that one, 100%.
And I guess, to the extent that you're just affirming something that's already said, we could expedite it that way as well.
100%, 100%. So the reason I'm here tonight is, as a member of the community, I'm actually friends with a lot of people in the Institute. We're proud of the Institute. We really want to see the Institute grow. But when I ask members of the Institute about helping in this issue, I get a flat-out, we don't care about this enough. I'm here because I'm hoping you care. You care for us, and, you know, it's not important enough for Robert Dykroff. It's not important enough for some of the members of the Institute. For them, in their words, and I've had conversations with them, is we should suck it up as a neighborhood. It's just not the right way to create a community. You were a community, and when we feel that way as a community, first of all, they don't pay for their guests to attend public school here. And when we're going to be issuing big bonds, you know, we recognize that that's a burden that the community is sharing on their behalf, to feel insulted that they can't even accommodate us by simply reducing traffic. It's been much better, I grant it, and give a lot of credit and improvement to Bill for that. But, you know, this is not the type of relationship we want with them. And I, too, have brought a lawyer today, so my lawyer, and I'd like to have him sworn in, because I've decided that I really don't want to be pushed around anymore, that I'm willing to invest the time and money it needs to slow down this process as much as humanly possible. That's all my goal will be. Dave, can you just introduce yourself and add yourself as my lawyer?
Good evening, I'm David Dorfman, and I will be brief, but I do know the neighborhood. I'm an avid runner and pass through very early in the morning quite frequently, and have noticed the changes in the neighborhood in the now 10 years that I've been here. I do swear that testimony was the truth. Thank you.
You provide the names, both names?
D-O-R-F-M-A-N, David.
I'm sorry?
David Dorfman, D-O-R-F-M-A-N. Thank you.
And did you want to give testimony at this point? I guess you... I guess you gave your observation as a runner?
Yes.
Okay.
That is the extent of my personal observation, but a big fan of the roads and noticing the children en masse in the mornings.
Thank you. Okay, so there were other people who wanted to come forward and speak? Anyone else? Yes.
This is your last chance.
No, it's not really.
Oh, I beg your pardon. That was presumptuous of me. I take it back.
Hi, I'm Lauren Seem, Newland Road. I testified last time and was sworn in, but I can swear in again.
Let's do it again, yeah. Do you swear or affirm to continue to testify truthfully?
I do. Although I do appreciate everything that my neighbors have said this evening, what I would like to say is that since the Institute for Advanced Study has agreed to reduce the size of the planned parking lot on Olden Lane from 99 to 66 places, and they've agreed to extend the construction and the delivery truck traffic restrictions that the planning board placed on the kitchen project and extended to the Rubenstein Commons project, and since they promised to comply with these restrictions, my husband Boot and I support the Rubenstein Commons project and withdraw the objections that we made at the last planning board meeting.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Well, I assume we will hear testimony from the Institute about those reductions that were. I think so. We wouldn't also, is this the planner?
So I just wanted to address two things that were brought up earlier and I've already been sworn in before.
Would you state your name for this?
Sure, my name is Andy Sutphen and I live at 37 Olden Lane. And I think there was a question as to whether or not Carl had engaged the Traffic and Safety Committee about remedying the traffic concerns of the neighborhood over the years. And essentially, my wife and I and my two children, who are now four and six, moved in back in 2012. And in 2013, we actually spoke with Sergeant Thomas Murray about having speed bumps put in, and that was rejected. Then in 2000, the speed bumps along Olden Lane to slow and calm the traffic down. In 2014, we spoke with Sergeant Thomas Murray about putting a four-way stop sign in at Battle Road and Olden Lane, and that was also rejected. In 2015, we proposed reversing the stop signs on Olden and Battle, so you would stop on Olden instead of Battle, and that was rejected. And in June of this past year, I proposed an ordinance that's somewhere in the council's chambers proposing that similar to the other three streets, Lover's Lane, Mercer Road, I'm sorry, Mercer Road and Mercer Street, that we would have the same weight limit of four tons. Our street right now is unlimited. And also requested a signage that there's no outlet or some verbiage thereof to let drivers know that, you know, it's not a through street. And that's just sort of died on the vine. The other thing that I'd like to address, and I was one of the few people that attended the Institute's community meeting right before the Labor Day of this year holiday, and I was given by one of the scholars there, the story of Maxwell Lane. And you're going to hear testimony this evening about who owns Maxwell Lane. Well, when you drive by on Mercer Road, it says Institute for Advanced Study, private road. So whose private road is it? So I just want to read from this book here that was handed out. "When I moved to Princeton in 1974 as the spouse of a newly appointed professor at the Institute for Advanced Study, my husband Irving and I were given the choice of dwellings to buy. They were all owned by the Institute and designated for sale exclusively to Institute faculty. As it happened, there was a house by a student of the Viennese architect, Robert Nutra," and I'll just save you the rest, "but they moved into the house. And if you look in the tax rolls, yes, these folks owned that house, but it was constructed by the Institute, sold by the Institute to these folks, and will revert back to the Institute when they no longer reside there." There are four houses on Maxwell Lane and Beblin Circle, which is a road off of that, that have this exact same arrangement. So it is a private road, just like the sign says. So this argument that we can't develop Maxwell Lane into the entrance for the Institute because we don't own it is fallacious. And I'm going to just stop there and thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to share this book with you.
Any questions? Anyone? Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I guess it's time for the main event. Mr. Simoff, I would call him as a witness. And he has exhibits and a large mock-up of our concept plan for preserving the neighborhood while also allowing the Institute to expand as it sees fit. And do you have a copy for Mr. Tarr?
Yes.
I think you already have it, but this is, this is the color version. Mr. Simoff, would you give your full name and address, please?
My name is Hal Simoff, S-I-M-O-F-F. My address is 2 Shunpike Road, Madison, New Jersey.
And do you have certain exhibits that you wish to share with the board?
Yes. I should be sworn.
Would you like? Have to be sworn. Qualify him as an expert?
Should I be sworn first?
Sure. Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
Yes, I do. I'm a licensed professional engineer, a licensed professional planner. I'm a fellow with the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I also might add that I've been a planning board member for in excess of 20 years in my municipality in Bernardsville, so I sit on that side of the table listening to these stories as well. And I've been qualified throughout the state from Cape May County up to Bergen County as a professional engineer, as a traffic engineer. I've also been an adjunct professor of traffic, of civil engineering at NJIT, and I've been qualified in excess of 100 municipalities.
And you previously were qualified before this board?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I have, I have an exhibit that's been put on the easel and then I have reduced versions for easy viewing. If I could pass those out. Let me just take one, let me take one.
Exhibit O2 of today's date.
The, the concept, I'll start with the concept that we're proposing and then I'll give the motivation and the background to that. What we're proposing is there's a, I believe it's called Parking Lot A, which is part of the plan to be located on Olden Lane. We are proposing to move it, call it north, so it has frontage on Einstein Drive, so that the traffic can access, they don't have to go on Olden Lane to access the new parking lot. I drew a parking lot with 122 spaces, which the intent was to replace in kind the proposed parking on Olden Lane, and then there's some proposed parking behind the Institute building, which would entail of, there's a proposed wetland stream crossing to go from the Olden Lane parking lot to the rear of the new facility. So I would, I would propose that the Olden Lane parking lot be relocated north on Einstein Drive, the stream, wetlands crossing be eliminated. And there's also a proposed walkway from Olden Lane to the new building to connect the buildings that the Institute has on the east side of Olden Lane. That would be maintained. And one of the advantages of this new layout is that there's two means of access to the Institute. On the southern side, there's the walkway, and on the northern side is Einstein Drive. So that rather than having all the, all the traffic and pedestrian activity coming from the southern parking lot, so I, so there's that pedestrian advantage and a traffic advantage. Now, the, the concept is to install a cul-de-sac at the southern intersection of Olden Lane and Einstein Drive, so that traffic cannot pass from Einstein to Olden. The same concept would be to close off Einstein Drive at the northern section or intersection. And these are, these are all intended to, to be developed with emergency access, so that emergency access that now presently uses Einstein Drive or uses Battle Road would still be able to continue. But, and I leave that up to dealing with the municipality and the, and the emergency services, because there are different ways of doing it. It can be done with curbing, it can be done with bollards, it can be done with gates. So the concept is to control, allow emergency access, but with a method that's acceptable to Princeton and to emergency services, so that at the northern intersection of Olden Lane and Einstein would be, that's emergency access only. And then also, at the intersection of Battle Road Circle and Battle Road West, the same concept. So the traffic that comes, the traffic would not go from Einstein Drive to Battle Road West to go out to Olden. It would be stopped at this point. There's, I, the one thing I did check is the number of homes on this, this would become known as a cul-de-sac, and the number of homes is about 17. I counted 17 from the aerial photo, which meets RSIS, so we're not creating any extended dead ends that are in violation of the residential site improvement standards. So what that does is by closing off access to Olden Lane at Einstein Drive and closing off access to Battle Road West, sends all the traffic to Maxwell out to Mercer Road. And the intent is to, is to have the Institute traffic use the, use what would be considered a main entrance on Mercer Road, and that it would separate the activities between the residential and the Institute. Now, that's, that's the concept. The concept is borne out by a number of facts that have been presented to this board and in the master plan and are part of the, of the record. The Jackhamart report suggests that in the February report where they did traffic counts, 43% of the traffic uses Maxwell today in their counting program, in the Ingress Movement, 43% uses Maxwell, Maxwell Lane. So that the remainder is spread between Battle Road and Olden Lane, so a majority of the traffic does not presently today does not use Maxwell. Majority of the traffic comes in other directions. And, and that's borne out in the February 2017 report by Mr. Jackhamart. There's also in the December report of Mr. Jackhamart, there's a list of, of functions, weddings, dinners, and other functions that occur between March and September, I believe. And those are all listed in the report, and they have as many as 250 attendees, and the projections are up to 150 cars. And some of those, many of them are on Saturday, many of them are in the evening at, up until 10 o'clock at night. And with 150 cars traveling through the neighborhood, I suggest that this, this solution preserves the residential character. The, and again, the Jackhamart report did not, only listed those functions from March till the end of the year, but didn't do any counting programs or didn't do any analysis of the traffic that would be generated by those locations or developments. The, there's also a report from your consultant, I guess it's IH Engineering dated April 7, 2017, that, and I'd like to quote two paragraphs of that report. Number 11. However, the minimalization of traffic impacts on Olden Lane, including both passenger and trucks, is important, not only in terms of traffic capacity and level of service, but also due to the character of the roadway. Now, you've heard the character of the roadway. It is relatively narrow, 24-foot-wide roadway traversing a residential neighborhood. The roadway has no pavement markings, no sidewalks, and due to existing plantings, topography, utility poles, and other features, it does not appear that provisions of sidewalks is feasible. During one of IH's field views of the site, a drive down Olden Lane was slowed by parked vehicles would effectively reduce the roadway to one travel lane, pedestrians walking the roadway, and brush piles in the pavement awaiting pickup. So that's a quote of your consultant. And then there's another paragraph that I'd like to quote in their report, number 14, where it says, "Well, we, we agree that the anticipated development will not substantially increase overall IAS-generated traffic volumes, giving the minimum staffing increase. The anticipated continuation of current programs of events, we question the creation of a main parking lot adjacent to Olden Lane might result in more traffic accessing the site via Olden Lane. We recommend that the app be requested to comment on this issue." Well, my, my draft takes that access off of Olden Lane and moves it to Einstein Drive with, in cutting off access to Olden Lane. So this is my theory or my presentation. I like to take credit for it, but it's part of a common sense solution. And then the, the committee, I want to get the name right, the Site Plan Review Advisory Board has made recommendations, and their recommendations are also consistent with what I've done. They're suggesting that the parking be on the east side of the wetlands, eliminate the wetlands crossing, and provide access to Einstein Drive. And that's in recommendation number one. So this, this plan provides better pedestrian access to the Institute and eliminates access to Olden Lane. So with, and then there are, there are concepts within the circulation plan and within the township's, or the Princeton's master plan, that all suggest that Mercer Lane is a secondary arterial which would be used for access, while Olden Lane and the streets, Battle Road and the streets leading to Olden Lane are the lowest level, and that's not a derogatory term, but the lowest level of, of, of traffic volumes. And the, and the master plan and the good planning concept says that you don't encourage through traffic in those roadways, and you don't encourage commercial access to those roadways because they're residential streets. And the Institute is a quasi-commercial use because it has weddings, it has functions, it has concerts. And so those are functions that generate traffic into the neighborhood. And the neighbors, you know, my feedback from the neighbors and my client is that they don't object to the Institute, but they just object to the traffic. And I would suggest that my concept plan. And I would suggest that my concept plan addresses both providing the ability for the institute to flourish, but also allows the, the neighbors to get their residential quality.
Okay, questions, Ms. Olman?
This is more of a comment, and I'm probably stating the obvious, but with this plan, any of the members of the neighborhood represented here tonight, if they wanted to drive to the institute, they would be forced to drive out to Mercer Street, turn left, and come down Maxwell Lane, is that correct?
It would be easier for them to walk.
Well, at night and in the winter.
Yeah.
And many of the faculty members, I'm assuming, from the institute live in that area, too.
Well, there is, there is faculty housing south of Einstein Drive to the east.
I think that's visitors mainly, isn't it? It's all members?
But, right, yes. To the north, to the north, the Einstein, or the institute's property starts just on the east side.
I understand that, but I do think that a number of people who live in that area are accustomed to being at the institute in some frame. And I would also say... Then I would, I'll make a couple of other sort of quasi, not hostile comments, but simply trying to look at what the negative effects of this would be. In addition to, it certainly works for the, the traffic coming in from building equipment and that kind of thing. But the, this in a way completely turns the whole circulation of that area around. Now, I can, I mean, no neighborhood wants traffic, including mine, and that's, doesn't work so well. But, I mean, you're now putting a lot more traffic on Mercer Street. There are people who live on Mercer Street who are going to find that awkward.
If I may.
They're making it impossible for, you know, many of the amenities that the institute provides the town are free concerts and, I mean, I know I go to them.
Okay, just a minute.
They are, they are free.
All right, let's not have back and forth at this point, please.
The, if I might...
I'm simply saying that this works very well for commercial traffic, and I can see the point. It seems to me to be punitive in various other ways, and I would want, if I were to consider this, to be thinking about all the sort of negative effects that could be created by this circulation pattern before I thought it was a perfect idea.
Well, first of all, Mercer is a secondary arterial in your master plan, which versus Olden Lane, which is the lowest character, you know, it's of residential. And it's also borne out by the residential site improvement standards that suggest that no additional, that the traffic that fronts on Mercer, on Olden, excuse me, on Olden, is the traffic that should access Olden. There's, in residential site improvement standards suggests that traffic should not be through traffic on Olden Lane, only for residential access. And I think that's the term that's used in the residential site improvement standards. So the, and the other reality of this is that the institute has grown its, and it's rightfully flourished, and it's increased in its intensity. And I'm suggesting that it's come to a point where its access should be along an arterial roadway, because it has become a major traffic generator. And the statistics presented by the Jackhamart Traffic Report suggest that 65%, approximately 65% of the traffic accesses other than Maxwell. And, and I'm, I make the comment and the argument that if you have a significant traffic generator, it should generate and should have access to an arterial, not to a low-level residential street, which, you know, 65% of the traffic is presented. So it's not only the truck traffic, but it's the access. And, and now this, this expansion is going to add, now, the Jackhamart report says it only adds three employees, but it, but it adds traffic from functions. It adds the ability to, I believe I saw in the report, 250 or 300 patrons could come here for functions. And I think that to, to push that number through a residential street is contrary to good planning.
Yes, David?
So I have a slightly different set of concerns. I know that there's a significant amount of member housing that would be on the east side of Olden, that's part of the institute. I believe there's also a childcare center on the east side. And so I guess one of my concerns is that I don't think that this plan is the panacea that you think it is or that the, that the neighbors think it is, because I can imagine, certainly if there are any future construction projects on that other part of the institute property that's on the east side of Olden, you're still going to have all those same issues that you're having right now with construction process, projects that are on the west side of Olden. I can imagine your Pepsi trucks, you know, going and loading up soda machines that are in the member housing, which is sort of apartment-like. I mean, I'm not sure that there are soda machines there, but I guess the point I'm trying to make is that, and, and then just the volume of automobile traffic, which I know is also a concern to the, the residents of this neighborhood, I'm just not sure really whether you're solving the problems you think you're solving.
I think, I think your comment about the, we're not proposing to close off Olden South. We're just proposing to close Einstein. So that the traffic that now comes down Olden to go to the daycare would continue to come down Olden, but, but they also have access to Springdale. So we're not talking about any restricting, and I've had this discussion with my client, you know, sometimes you can't, you can't get everything you want, but we're maintaining the access to the institute, we're proposing to maintain the access to the institute property on the east side via Olden. What's being restricted to Olden is traffic on the west side, which is more of a commercial development, while the traffic on the east side of Olden is more residential.
Right. I guess I'm not taking issue with your testimony, but I think that Mr. Mayor's testimony was, you know, adopt this plan and all resistance to future institute projects goes away, all need for monitoring of commercial traffic goes away. I, I don't think that that testimony is accurate.
Well, I mean, I'll leave it to his testimony, but as I said, this plan does not restrict access to the east side via Olden.
Wait, wait, I don't understand what you just said.
I'm just...
Oh, oh, okay, but...
To the east side of the institute property.
Okay, but from that side to that side, it does.
From Olden to the west would be restricted. And that's, and that's basically the, you know, the, the proposed commercial, commercial character development.
Hi. So I had some more questions about these barriers, these breadlines. I know that there is different scenarios, you know, described, but I would like you to elaborate a little bit more about them, and would they be, would this all be temporary? Or is this...
No, they would be, I would suggest they be permanent. But emerg, every emergency service department has different preferences. And I'm not suggesting that one is better than the other, but Princeton has, I would assume that Princeton has a certain preference to how they want emergency access controlled. One is just put a slanted Belgium block curb that the fire truck can ride over and on the, on the, well, just talk about the northern, just continue the Belgium block curb on the west side with a slanted curb, and then the truck can just ride over the curb. Another is to put a fence with a gate that the fire department has a, or emergency services has a key to. Another is bollards that are, that break down or fold down. So there's, you know, it's, it's the preference of the emergency services.
Another question, I mean, I guess these trucks are going to learn their lesson pretty quickly, but there's always going to be new trucks coming in. Don't you think that this might be a problem with trucks coming in and getting stuck and doing circles around the neighborhood?
Well, if they know they can't get to the institute or to the, you know, to the, to the, down here, the kitchen and the, where they're delivering material, I mean, they only, they only do it once, and they, they, we're not creating any dead ends, because they could, they would still go out these side streets to Springdale. So that would happen once, and then they wouldn't do it again. The fellow, the...
Yeah, I mean, I feel like there's always new drivers and there's always new trucks coming in.
Well...
Maybe, maybe like the ones that already have done it several times.
Well, if, if the same company is delivering whatever, bread.
Right.
What, he does it once.
Right. Yeah. I just think that, yeah, there might be new drivers also that...
Well...
That could be a problem for the neighborhood.
They learn. It doesn't take much.
Yeah.
Have you considered the effect on Mercer Street of, I mean, Mercer Street gets backed up at rush hour and turning, that turns into Maxwell Lane? There's no light there. I mean, I, it was the same question I think David asked about the trucks. Some trucks have, I understood that some, one of the problems was trucks sometimes can't get out onto Mercer Street because there's so much traffic from Maxwell Lane, so they wanted to go up to Olden because of the light. So are you talking about putting in a light there, or have you, have you considered that the effect on Mercer Street?
That's, I mean, if you listen to the institute's, or you pay attention to the institute's traffic report, they say there's no problem with the increase in, there's a minimal increase in traffic, and there's no problem with the traffic generated by the institute, the expansion. But there are, I mean, we, there are ways, well, the last time I was here, the radii at the intersection were increased, so the trucks could make right turns in and out.
I guess the big problem is left turns. Left turns out and left turns in.
Right.
Well, you, one of the, one of the things that would be looked at is to widen, widen the exit to two lanes, so that you would separate the left turns from the right turns. There are different ways of addressing that problem. My, my issue is that you want to, you want to promote neighborhood, and you want to promote safe ingress and egress to the neighborhood, and you don't want to, you don't want to have through traffic in a neighborhood, which is in the, which is in the concept of the master plan and the circulation plan. And in the master plan and the circulation plan also encourage traffic to access, this is a secondary arterial. The only, the only arterials that are above this in the master plan are 206, yeah, 206 and I think Route 1, you know. Those are the major arterials. This is a second, Mercer is a secondary arterial. So I, I understand your concern, but the concept is to have high-generated traffics on arterials, not on low-level, single-family roads.
I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm considering this, but one of the things, I'm one of the council members, and so I'm, I'm thinking in terms of policy, town-wide. I think there are a lot of neighborhoods that would prefer to have their traffic reduced by, you know, eliminating some ins and outs, including me. I would love to have one of, you know, people cut through my neighborhood all the time, and I wish they didn't. So where do you stop? I mean, I, I want to address the, the problems as much as possible with the institute, but what's, what's a policy that, you know, this planning board can actually think is right in terms of everyone, and what, you know, what, who's allowed to use the roads? Are only neighbors allowed to use roads?
No. Your master plan, your circulation plan has, and the residential site improvement standards have different levels of roadway, major arterial, secondary arterial, collectors, and so, and it's a well-established, it's a well-established concept. Now, what, what's happened here and what's classically happened is the institute has continually to expand. If, if we were talking about just residential streets with no, no increase in traffic or without improvements, but every, you know, every few months or every few years, the institute proposes a new development. They have a significant amount of vacant land, they have, they have a, a purpose, they have a, which the neighbors don't want to, don't want to get in the way of, but they don't want to be penalized by allowing, by having the institute continually expand. This allows the institute to continually expand without the, without the, you know, the neighbors keep coming back to this planning board. I would say your concept is, your, your question is correct if there's no expansion, but the fact that there's continual expansion and continual new construction...
But that's happening everywhere in town. I mean, the town is always growing.
Yes. But, but what's, but my answer to that is, it's, we don't, the neighbors, and it's my feedback, the neighbors don't object to the growth of the institute, they just don't want the traffic. And this is a solution to allow the institute to grow at its, at its own pace and its own mission, without having the neighbors having to keep continually coming back and, and raising these issues. Because every time with four, only with additional traffic keep coming through the neighborhood, it's getting worse and worse and worse. I think that's the difference between an established residential neighborhood.
Louise, did you have a question?
Yes, I have similar concerns about the law of unintended consequences and entering what is a, basically a capillary kind of system into, you know, channeling 100% of the traffic onto one road, which, so I, so I'm curious about the geometry of Maxwell Road. We've talked a lot about the geometry and characteristics of Olden, and I know it affects a lot more people, so I'm certainly not arguing with that. But if, if you're, if you're increasing the inbound AM peak hour traffic from 45 to 100, and you're increasing the afternoon peak hour traffic on Maxwell, I mean, from 28 to 94, what is that, what implications does that have for left turn movements? Are, are we talking about needing to either add a signal or roundabout at that intersection or left turn lanes on Maxwell and Mercer for those turning movements, AM and PM? I guess maybe those numbers aren't right if they don't capture the people who are coming to the daycare center and would be parking over on the east side of Olden anyway, but I, I'm just, I do have concerns about routing all of that, both commuter and truck traffic on one street. I don't think it's going to affect the traffic volume on Mercer. People are on Mercer anyway, whether they're coming in on Einstein, unless they come across lovers, I, I understand that, too. But the, the, the things that I'm looking at in the...
Yeah, I'm looking at figure...
...don't show turning... Traffic before don't show turning movement-
Right, I'm looking at figure two. Are you looking at figure two?
I'm looking at figure one and figure two, yes, in the February 17, 2017 report.
Right, it, it shows-
So I, I mean, I don't wanna get complete, I, I'm just sort of curious about how you see it playing out if you're closing off these capillaries, creating one funnel for all this inbound and outbound traffic and what that means to what kind of road improvements you anticipate would need to be made at Maxwell and Mercer to accommodate all of that.
Well, that number, if you look at, I guess the critical period is getting out because that's where the left turns are most critical and the, and the highest number of-
Well, people coming from the north, entering in the morning would need to take a left turn to come into the-
Yeah, but that, they're only crossing one lane. They're making a left turn across one lane. Coming out, they have to make a left turn across two lanes.
Hmm, no, I don't think so.
That's true, but they can also, I mean, because of the high volumes on Mercer Street, that can create-
No.
A lot of problems for people who aren't trying to get to the institute queuing up because it's only two lane, you know, they can't be passed while they're waiting to make that left turn.
Right, the backup goes, rapidly builds up-
Well-
You know, it's based on left turn movements.
The, the issue is, there is a couple different, there's a couple ways, we, we don't know the volumes and we don't know the, the intensity of the traffic on Mercer, we don't know the percentage of left turns and right turns coming out of Maxwell. Um, this, this figure one and figure two don't demonstrate those numbers.
Right, right.
So there's a couple ways and I would suggest that if you're, if you're going from, now there's, based in the afternoon, there's 28 cars leaving on Maxwell. And it looks like there's 51 leaving on Alden Lane.
And 14 on Springdale.
Right. Well, and we don't know if the 14 on Springdale are just, just the daycare-
Right.
Just the daycare and the, the east side of Alden, because that wouldn't change.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, um, but the, um, but let's assume that we're gonna add 51, another 50 vehicles to that 28 vehicles. So it would, it would go up to 79 vehicles. Um, then an analysis has to be done as to what percentage are left turns. There are a couple different ways of doing it. You put a double left turn exit, a double lane exit so that the left turns are not impeded with the right turns. And again, um, it's, it's not only the, it's not only the, uh, the rush hour traffic, you know, the four to six traffic, the, if you look at the table, table three in the December report, there are, oh, I didn't count them, but there are a good number of special events listed.
Yeah.
And some of these are on, you know, Saturday night, uh, like the first one is the Edward T. Cone Concert, March 4th, 225 guests with 150 cars that lets out at 10 o'clock at night. I, I suggest that that's something that shouldn't be coming through a residential neighborhood.
Is there any way to change the entrances on Alden so that they simply don't accommodate? Oh, I'm sorry.
Your mic, they're saying your mic isn't on.
Yeah, we need, we need to hear from the institute about their changes and their comments on this. I assume that, that they've, some of this has been shared with the institute-
It was shared, yeah, early.
So, Mr. Potter, I think that, um, we've heard a lot of very interesting presentations, but I also think that we really need to make sure that this is a dialogue with the people who are making, who are making this application and we're, rather than a discussion of, of circulation and slowly widening into a lot of Princeton, so.
I couldn't agree more. We, we think this is a perfect topic for both review by the, the boards, professionals, and further review by the institute's professionals. We, we envision a kind of collaborative process because we realize that this may not be the ultimate, uh, solution to all the problems, but it's an outstanding beginning to finding a solution which can become, in Mr. Mayor's words, a win-win-win solution. Uh, we did submit it to the institute, uh, the other day. Hal, what day was that?
I guess the suggestion is we're having a public hearing on a particular application, uh, rather than making this into a master plan hearing at this point, which the board has, should hear from the applicant and then determine if they, it is in a position to make decisions.
Of course, but we realize this is not a master plan, uh, hearing, but we're recommending conditions to an approval of the development.
Right, and we're only suggesting is that we should hear from the applicant as to the suggestions that have been made and any further input that the applicant has.
That's fine, I, I agree, of course.
Okay. So you ready to proceed, Ms. Tarr?
Excuse me, just one more point. I was handed a message saying that there are other members of the public who wish to testify and give comment. I, is this true?
I have a question.
That's a yes.
I think that's a yes.
Well, okay.
Hi, Lynn Jerky, 148 Springdale. I do swear to tell the truth. Um, I have a question. Um, my concern is, you know, we live on Springdale, we have the pool traffic, we have the resident traffic that comes down to the housing, and we have the daycare center. If you have all these stops on Alden where people can't go down that way, you're gonna send the traffic down-
Could you speak in the mic?
Pass-
Yeah, could you get closer to the mic? Thanks.
Yeah, you're gonna send the traffic down Springdale, past the daycare center, and I know there's housing right across the street. I walk there all the time, kids are on bicycles, they're running across the street to the playground. That's not safe.
The- Well, I think that was a comment, I think we were, we were about to hear from the applicant.
Well, if I might just make that, we're not proposing any change to the access to the, to the institute property on the east side of Alden. The only change is to the west side of Alden.
Okay, um, I think since we're turning to the, let's close the, the public portion of the meeting and-
We can't hear you. Why, we can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
No, yeah.
The public portion of the hearing was, was just closed.
You can't hear, you can't, this microphone isn't working?
Yeah.
Alan, I'm sorry.
Bill and I would, excuse me, Bill and I would, uh, have some summing up to do at some point, so in terms of closing the public portion, we would have a few minutes of comment, I think, at the end.
Well, let, let's hear, we go-
That's fine, yeah, of course.
Good evening, Chris Tarr representing the institute. We were sworn last time. I thought, uh, what would be most helpful, uh, would be for Mr. Grip to, uh, describe and discuss with you the compliance which has occurred with respect to the conditions which were imposed at the time of the Simons Dining Hall renovation. And then to go through with you the 12 additional action steps which have taken place since your last meeting. Each of those has, is in a document, uh, those documents were submitted and if we could make sure that they're part of the record, there's a document called Report on Compliance with Simons Hall Restrictions and a letter from Mr. Grip to Mrs. Gunning. With that, uh, Mr.-
I guess just to respond to that, there is a memo from Mr. Solo and Mr., uh, or to them from the, that's been distributed to the planning board, uh, that includes a letter of August 31st from the institute to Ms. Gunning and a, uh, I guess a report of compliance attached to that.
So it, it-
For, we can mark that as a applicant.
All the documents which are in the file, the original plans, the application forms, make up part of the record and always do, but those were previously submitted, I just wanted to indicate that. Uh, Mr. Grip was sworn previously, he, he presented slides which were marked as A1 last time. We could, uh, we have more slides on the same deck, if they could be A1 with today's date or A2 as you choose.
None of our screens are on, are working?
Well, that was not on either.
Okay.
Right, it was on before, so let's, let's get the computer warmed up and-
Madam Chair, might we take a five-minute break just for, in general, and might we take a, just short break and, and make sure that the stuff works?
Okay, yes, five-minute break, please. Yes, we do.
Yeah, that was so funny.
Yeah, that was so funny.
Can I envision it ever?
Well, yeah, but you have other meetings where it's not, it's, it's important to be down as a law. Then there's always, when you go to the hospital, you know, you're kind of, you just know that she, she won't, because here's the deal, if you're gonna charge us for it, you might just do it, right? So I mean, that's what we do at staff, because it's smart, so we, we can play those kinds of games, but sometimes we're sort of-
Are we, the TV guy-
The TV fellow, just a minute, he said he'd be right back.
Yeah.
I got you.
Yes.
If we could come back into session, please? Okay. If we could just settle down, and Mr. Tar, you were...
I think Mr. Gripp was prepared to begin with his slides, he was previously sworn.
Mr. Gripp?
I'm ready.
Yes.
Thank you again for the opportunity. As Mr. Tar has already previously described, what I'd like to do is walk you through what I signed out myself and sent to you back at the end of August. I promise to be brief, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Next slide, please. First and foremost, as many of you have, are aware, and many of you sat before, were on the board when we came before you for, with Simons Hall, there were a series of conditions which we were asked to comply with, and I'd like to hit them briefly. It's our position that we've complied with those conditions in the resolution to include the continuation of the rerouting of construction and delivery traffic, the practice that we first undertook with our faculty housing project. In addition, we installed signs both on campus and off campus with Mr. West's support and approval on positioning. We did provide the Maxwell Lane engineering plans as required for review and comment, and I'll talk about that a little bit further in the presentation. We did receive approval from the town on those improvements and did install the temporary features as requested and required by the resolution. And we did provide proof of communication that we provided to all of our vendors on the traffic policy, to the land use manager here at the town. So, far as we're concerned, and our position is that we've met all of those conditions, and we felt it was important to cover that first before we went into the additional steps that we've taken in an effort to continue our commitment to the neighborhood and ourselves to control traffic. Next slide, please. First and foremost, yeah, as a result of the meeting back at the middle of June, we went back, taking the input and comment from the neighborhood very seriously, and took a look at the parking that was causing the most amount of attention, and that would be the parking that was associated to the east of the stream, directly off of South Olden, which at that time and in the current application was 99 spots. We, we went back to the drawing board, so to speak, and we started to look for opportunities where we had constraints that we could live with, or that we could work around, those constraints being building and road setbacks, environmental setbacks, and the preservation of historic view planes among three. And we came up with a solution that we are proposing at this point to reduce that parking lot from 99 to 77 spots, but maintain the access road to the south side of the campus, which provides us not only emergency egress to the backside of the campus, but also the ability for mobility-challenged individuals who access the campus, for Wolfenson Hall in particular, which is the concert venue, and other types of activities that we have there. We are looking at shifting 15 spaces to the west side of campus. Nine is noted directly off Einstein Drive, will be in the vicinity, for those of you who have been on the campus in the vicinity, or in the footprint of where the temporary kitchen sits currently. And then we'll do some reconfiguration in parking lot B, which requires the removal of a structure in the middle of the parking lot that used to serve as the feed water pump for our chill water system. The pond, you may know from history, used to be our source for water, we can no longer use it. We keep the pond open for aesthetics, we fill it for aesthetics, but we're, we're going to be able to adjust around that, do some reconfiguration and create some more, some more spots. Of course, we're, we continue to look for options that may better suit all the parties, but this is where we are at tonight's presentation. Next slide, please. As you previously heard, we recently installed video monitoring on our own. We, we've positioned it in three different places. Two on Olden, one adjacent to the Director Digrass residence, directly north of Ober, closer to the bottom of our campus at the intersection of Einstein and South Olden, as well as on the corner of Girdel and Maxwell. Our intent is to use these, this tool to monitor traffic on a more timely basis for our own benefit and in order to fulfill our commitment. It also has the capability of monitoring speed, and as it is being calibrated right now, we expect to start getting some real-time and useful data here in the near future, but we're committed to our public safety officers and myself to using that data to isolate down the folks that need the attention for compliance purposes, and we'll continue to use it in that manner. Next slide is, is an early snapshot of what Maxwell Drive looks like at 6:45 in the morning. Now, I know I've said this before, but I also live on the campus, and my house is directly to the left in that picture, and I know that's what it looks like at 6:45 in the morning. Next slide, please. We also committed to doing periodic spot checks with our public safety officers, all who are retired policemen. We've picked different weeks and different days of the week, and as you've previously heard, they sit out adjacent to, you know, someplace in that neighborhood of where that car is sitting to the left, and they, anything with a commercial license plate, they stop and ask for destination, they log it. We have the records of those, those events, and they, they do run, they will allow those, those folks to go forward, it's really just a spot check to understand what exactly is happening. We've done it six times. Four in August, yes, the traffic was lighter, but most recently, we did one two days ago. And the data, interestingly enough, is not that much different between August and two days ago. What we're finding is, on average, there's one vehicle a day about, that seems to be headed to the institute that requires our attention. The PSO, the public safety officer, is logging the destination, and we're finding that there are a number of folks who are passing by him that are destined for the neighborhood. Excellent.
Was that on Olden?
Yes, he's sitting, he's sitting on Olden. We have all of our major construction contracts now contain language similar to what you see up on the screen. The first offense, which you do not see, is, I'll call it a slap on the wrist, come see me, as to why you can't comply, but the second offense and beyond, have a series of different penalties that are subject to my discretion. We used that discretion recently and fined our first contractor for failure to comply at $2,500, and we removed a subcontractor at the same time, and, and we're prepared to continue that on. My sense is, the rest of the contracting community, their attention has now, if it wasn't obtained, it now has been obtained. And trust me when I say that this particular contractor has ratcheted down on his folks, and there has not been a recurrence. The Institute does and continues to support any traffic calming that might be envisioned for Olden, and on the screen what you see in yellow are the private roadways associated with the Institute. The red being, of course, from the boundary on Olden, north on, north on Olden all the way up to Mercer. We understand that there are some policy issues associated with traffic calming in the town, however, we are prepared and committed to up to $50,000 on a fair share basis for any traffic calming that the town may wish to institute on Olden Drive, Olden Lane, excuse me.
Would that include sidewalks?
It would include anything that the town believes would help to calm the traffic on Olden Lane. Next slide, please. We have also done some communication outreach to both our staff regarding speeding, and going to the next slide, and also have asked Crossroads to do the same thing. Crossroads is the daycare center. We do have in that daycare center a fair number of Institute members who do use it. They are walkers, it's the non-walkers that, that deserve our attention. Fortunately, the director is 100% supportive, and as will continue, and has, has asked their folks to mind the speed limit, and, and we expect her continued cooperation, and we'll continue to work that as well. We do have a sidewalk planned, you've heard this from us before, and you've heard about the safety issues associated with the stretch of Olden Lane that we're responsible for. We have awarded a contract to a local vendor, with a planned start of about two weeks from now, to build this lighted sidewalk that will allow folks to safely get off Olden Lane, adjacent to Institute property. What I would also like to point out is, there are ADA ramp connections, are, two of them already constructed, one on Newland and one on Ober that are part of this project to allow for easy access from the neighborhood for those who need that type of assistance. We expect this project to be done by the middle of October. Next slide, please. As I referred to earlier, one of the conditions in the Simons Hall project was to both temporarily and permanently open the intersection of Maxwell Lane and Mercer Road. What you see on the left was the temporary opening, which we did prior to the start of the building permits, as, as we were asked to do, and just recently, in the last three or four weeks, we completed this section that you see on the right. There are, there's a small amount of work remaining, but it does not prevent this, this intersection from, from being used to its maximum potential. Next slide, please. We've maintained our community outreach posture, we've had two community meetings in the last six months. We have used the same distribution list as we are required to use for formal notifications, which is about 120 neighbors. We've had roughly 30, plus or minus, per event, and a few extra folks who've notified me directly that they couldn't make it, and we've provided them the information that they've requested. In addition to that, I remain completely available to the neighborhood on any issues associated with the Institute, and between phone calls and emails and personal drive-by discussions, my, my notes reflect over 50 occurrences in that short time period that I've been approached by neighbors on different issues. I welcome, Ms. Sarisole brought up her spreadsheet, I, I welcome that, I use it, I, I don't get it as frequently as I would like, and I haven't seen one in a while, but it is great information for me to use, and it allows me to use that tool, plus the tools that I just mentioned previously, to single out and provide specific attention to those in our community who haven't got the message but need to get it. Next slide, please. One of the things we talked about doing with the Simons Hall application is, is to buy computerized speed signs for use by the town, and we have done that. About a year ago, we bought the two signs, we provided them to the town. We understand the town, it's the town's discretion as to where they're located, and this one is, in particular, the picture is the one that's currently located at Olden Lane. At times, there has also been one on Springdale, and we, we certainly support Sergeant Murray and his folks of putting the signs where he thinks will get the biggest benefit, but we provided them with a hope that they would actually be used in the neighborhood. Excellent. Now, in an effort also to help people get to us who might go on the webpage that are visitors and aren't familiar with where we are, we've made some structural changes to our webpage in terms of both the delivery directions, visitors who are coming from the south and, and directing their use of Maxwell Lane, but also going into the Google GPS system to replant our PINs so that folks who use their GPS to find us will be directed on Maxwell Lane, and these are just screenshots of, go ahead, Tom, are some of the things that we've done on our website to try to encourage people to come in off of Maxwell Lane. I'd like to close by saying, you know, I've been here almost two years, so I've been personally involved in all of this traffic issue. I'm both personally and professionally committed to do the very best I can for both the neighborhood and the Institute, and will continue to do that irregardless of what the issue is. I've been, I've received calls for traffic, things in the woods, things of some of the other projects we're doing, will always be receptive to feedback from the neighborhood, but in this particular issue, we will continue to persevere and do the very best we can to, to get our contractor and delivery traffic in specifics to Maxwell Lane, and I think the results have been good so far, but we'll continue forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Questions, Mr. Gripp?
Anyone? Yes, David?
Just a couple. Have you looked at all, at off-tract sidewalk improvements along Olden Lane, whether they're feasible and considered that as part of the solution?
Are you referring to our, our property or, or the public property?
No, off of your property, along the remainder of Olden Lane?
Actually, I don't know that I'm in a position to, to address that question, but I know that we have talked extensively with the town about traffic calming opportunities, and if that were to be an initiative worthy of our participation, I think we would consider it very strongly.
Okay, I mean, it relates to the question Jenny asked earlier.
Right, I mean sidewalks aren't actually traffic calming, I mean, I think they are a tiny bit, I think when, because the presence of sidewalks indicate, you know, in residential place where people are walking, but I agree, I think, I think it might be something to consider, since I know sometimes that's a condition of developments, is a contribution for sidewalks.
Off-site, yeah.
Off-site, I mean.
So, so what was the problem with adding speed bumps?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because I, I'm, I wanted to tell, explain about speed bumps. We are looking at that policy as a town, but right now, there's a committee working on objective cri, if we decide to repeal our current moratorium on speed bumps and speed humps and things like that, which we're seriously considering, I think most of the council members are in favor of doing that, but before we do that, we're going to come up with a policy, an objective criteria for where to do that, because the truth is, everyone wants their traffic, their traffic reduced, everyone wants traffic to go slower, I know, I hear it, I mean, that's why I'm sensitive to this, because people from almost every neighborhood have contacted me, because I'm on the Traffic Safety Committee, and I'm kind of the traffic person on the council, and there's just, it's the number one thing that I hear if I go to a party, if I go to McCaffrey's. Speeding, from my perspective, is one of the most important issues for people in the town, I just hear so much about it, and so, how do we, how do we address it? Obviously, we shouldn't just, you know, put speed bumps in where people have hired lawyers, for instance, I mean, that's like the worst way to, you know, to, to figure out where to put traffic calming, I'm sorry, but, you know, we have to have objective criteria. So, actually, Jack West is, the engineer is coming up with some actual data and speeds and traffic numbers, and then we're going to be discussing other issues, other things too, like, you know, density, and increases and decreases and things like that. But hopefully, it is going to be objective.
I, I would like to add, you know, we, we are, we have speed bumps, most of you have been on the campus, so you know we have speed bumps, so we, we have used them successfully on our private roads to, you know, traffic calm, and, and that's why we would be supportive as, as Mr. West and the, and the town... and that's why we would be supportive as Mr. West and the town come up with a policy of contributing, as I mentioned earlier, in some, in a financial fashion to helping calm the situation on Olden Lane.
I mean, truthfully, my guess is that it's not, there are a lot of really dense neighborhoods with more traffic and more kids at jeopardy. I mean, that's just, that's, I'm just being upfront with the neighbors and everyone about my perspective because, you know, there's really speedy traffic going right down Witherspoon Street where kids are crossing the street. That's a residential street. I mean, there's, there's really speeding traffic everywhere, but I do, I also feel like sidewalks are really a good safety, would be a good safety improvement. Nobody should be walking in the street, especially when the traffic has increased like this.
Tim?
Thank you. I think we need to acknowledge that IAS has done some work to address the concerns of the, of the neighbors. And I think that the, the main issue that resonates with me are, is the issue of children out during the hours that they're going to school and when they return to school. Not having any idea of what IAS security staffing is, I know that you have former police officers in your security detail. Have you considered partnering with the neighborhood to have a safety presence out during times when, now, children are present at all times, but during the specific times when the most children are getting a bus and/or maybe walking or riding to school?
I think Janine Percaro is going to answer that. She was sworn last time. She is the chief operating officer of the Institute.
I don't know that we've directly considered partnering with the neighborhood on that, but that's definitely something that we would consider having conversations with the neighborhood to do.
Can I, can I just ask a question? From what Mr. Meyer said, I gather the school bus goes down Olden. Is that correct? The stops for the school bus are?
The question was, where are the stops for the school bus? Are they on Olden to go all the way down to the Institute project and around and back? I know, Jack, maybe you can tell me that.
I'm sorry, the, the public portion is closed right now, Lisa.
But we can answer this question.
You're asking a question about the--
I'm asking, I'm asking the Institute because they must know whether they have school bus stops.
Excuse me, but I think that it's also appropriate that the residents who live there, who have the children, are allowed to address the question as well. Just because the public comment portion is closed doesn't mean that a relevant question can't be answered by both sides.
There's a factual issue. I think the question has now been directed to Mr. West.
Well, I mean, unfortunately, I don't know exactly where the bus goes. I do know there's, there's a stop at Olden and Battle. I know there's a stop on Olden and Mercer. There's several different buses for the various schools, for the various private schools, but I don't know specifically exactly the bus route.
But it sounds as though the bus goes down Olden, it doesn't go down Springdale.
I believe there is a bus that goes down Springdale also.
Well, but it, you know, it seems to me that, that one of the, one of the problems is that the children are waiting for the bus on Olden, at least I've seen them out there, and I assume that they're picked up there. And I wonder if, if the bus route were changed somewhat, if it could be safer.
And we've, we've talked about that. It's one of the possible solutions is looking at the bus, the bus stops, the location of them to make it, to make it safer.
Because it's--
We have not had that discussion with the school board yet, though.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have questions?
I have a, David, do you want to go?
David, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask whether your team is going to respond in any way to the proposed alternate plan?
I think Mr. Jacomart has just a couple of words about it, then he's going to talk next.
Okay.
Shannon? I'd like to raise a point of order, please. Is the board accepting as a factual matter that there is a school bus stop on Olden? Because the issue was not clearly able to be answered by Mr. West and we would like this clearly stated in the record. We have a witness who will confirm the fact. If the board accepts that fact without further testimony, it's not an issue, but it's been raised and it needs to be addressed finally, one way or the other.
I think we've heard that there are school bus stops on Olden.
That's, I just wanted that confirmation because the record wasn't fully clear, so thank you.
Okay.
Shannon?
I just wanted to clarify. So currently, right now, the Institute is routing traffic that turns right going down Mercer, down, what was the road? But I guess other traffic is going down Olden because, so is any traffic being routed down Olden?
We've, the, the traffic policy for delivery vehicles does not allow for movement away from Maxwell. Okay? The auto traffic coming in, and I know that Mr. Jacomart will, may offer some insight as to what he thinks the traffic patterns might be, but we believe, or I, what I believe or what I've been told is that, you know, the entry into Olden to the campus is largely dependent on where you're coming from. And because there's a turn lane there and we already know that the turn into Maxwell during rush hour, a left across the line is difficult, that people will make the left there, conversely, the right if you're coming from Princeton Pike in the south.
Right. Okay.
But if I could state it affirmatively, because I don't know that you were here for some of the earlier hearings, the all construction and delivery trucks are to use Maxwell. Period. End of discussion.
Okay. Yeah, I was just a little confused because from this picture, it looks like the sign's pointing down Olden.
That's sort of, it's a two-sided sign.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
George Jacomart has been qualified here many times and also the last meeting, and he was sworn then. I think he has three or four additional slides and then some comments on the traffic generally.
Been previously sworn.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, members of the planning board. Before I get to the news slides, I just want to remind you of the key points that I made last time regarding traffic. The first one is that the overall traffic generation of the Institute, meaning the total number of vehicle trips in and out of the site, based on the counts that we did, is relatively low. It's not a very high number. It's about 100 vehicle trips in the morning peak hour entering into the site and roughly 100 leaving. It's 104, 94, it's in that range. And that's not a large number when you look at other traffic generators in the region. And as was discussed earlier, 43%, in the morning peak hour, 43% comes in on Maxwell and 45% comes in on Olden, and the balance comes in on Springdale or on Battle. Those percentages on Springdale and Battle are much smaller. In the afternoon peak hour, we have 30% of the traffic that exits on Maxwell. So it's a much lower percentage than what's coming in in the morning, and 54% exit on Olden and the balance uses these other streets. And as you know, the, the reason we have more traffic exiting on Olden in the afternoon peak hour is because we have a traffic light there and the conditions making a left turn or right turn from Maxwell onto Mercer are difficult in, in doing the peak hours. The other main point is that the total traffic, the daily traffic that's on Olden today, and that will basically remain the same in the future because this application in front of you will not add a lot of employees. We're talking about two to five employees. They are primarily service employees associated with this new building. So, and the number of events, the type of events will not change from what was happening in the past. So we feel that, and I'll go into it in more detail because there was a question asked by some of your members and by your engineer, but basically, that volume will remain the same. It's between 620 vehicles per day and the highest number is 860 vehicles per day. That's the upper section of Olden near Mercer. That number is about half the threshold that's recommended by RSIS. RSIS says very clearly, a residential street like this one should not carry more than 1,500 vehicles per day. In this case, it varies between 620 and 860. So we're roughly half of what that standard says. And today, about 5% of that traffic is trucks, 5%. And most of those trucks are two-exle trucks. Practically all of them are two-exle trucks. So that's a condition today and I believe will remain the same in the future. There was one question that was discussed last time, I think Mr. Cohen asked it, it was also asked by, by your traffic consultant, whether the shift of the access to parking lot A, which today is on Einstein, in the future, it's proposed to be off Olden, does that shift traffic from Maxwell to Olden or not? To answer that question, we did, and it was basically on Monday and Tuesday, we did additional surveys. We did two data collection efforts. One was basically a license plate tracking survey to find out how many people today enter on Maxwell and go to parking lot A. And during the morning peak period, the 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. period, there are 22 vehicles that enter from Maxwell. They all make a right turn. They come from the south, make a right turn from Mercer onto Maxwell, and their destination is in parking lot A. So that's, in theory, is the total amount of traffic that could shift from Maxwell to Olden if, you know, if, to answer that particular concern. The, the second effort we did, the second data collection effort was in travel time surveys. So we had one person driving by car back and forth during two hours, starting and measuring at the point, here you can see on the slide, measuring from the point on Mercer where there's the pedestrian crossing to the battlefield. And in one instance, the driver would drive up Mercer, turn right onto Maxwell, go down Maxwell to Einstein, all the way to Olden, turn right onto Olden, and then turn into what today is the gravel lot, which in the future would be that new parking lot. So, and then the second run was via Mercer, going to the traffic light at Mercer and Olden, making right turn down Olden, and also entering into the gravel lot. And each route was tested five times between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. The average time via Mercer and Olden was 2 minutes and 55, 2 minutes and 55 seconds. The standard deviation, meaning the variability from that is 30 seconds. And then via Maxwell and Einstein, the average time was 2 minutes and 40 seconds with less variation, the standard deviation was only 11 seconds. So it's clear to me that the path via Maxwell and Einstein to that future lot is shorter than the path through the, through Mercer and Olden, and it's also more predictable that time. And I should add also that drivers, they perceive the time that they wait at the red light, they perceive it as much longer as it is. When we do travel simulation studies, when we try to model future behavior, we generally multiply the waiting time by two, by a factor of two or 2.5 because people tend to perceive the time. If you ask any kind of person, ask even people from the IAS, how much time do you wait to make your left turn from Maxwell to Mercer, they say, oh, at least five minutes. But in reality, it's, it's less. So what I'm saying is people will even perceive the time via Mercer and Olden as being longer. And so I believe that this shift of access drive will not change the, the traffic pattern between Maxwell and Olden. And Tom, if you can go back a slide, the other point I made, I made it last time, I want to repeat it again. The major choice of access route doesn't depend so much where your destination is on the campus. It depends primarily on the, on your origin, where you come from. If you drive up Alexander, you come from Route 1, let's say, driving up Alexander, today you don't even go onto Mercer. You turn left on College, you turn left on Springdale, and you take one of the smaller streets, east-west streets, to reach the campus. If you come from the Trenton area, you're going to turn automatically right on Maxwell. And then if you exit, you know, obviously, there's the traffic light. So the, the choice of those routes does not depend so much on where your destination is on the campus. The next slide shows, I also, since we had the person driving back and forth, we also timed the reverse trip, but this was during the morning peak period from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. You can see, that's reversed. The travel time through the Mercer-Olden route, through the traffic light, is shorter than it is via Maxwell because of the long delay to make that left turn from Maxwell and Mercer. And, and we measured it, the delays range from 45 seconds to a minute and a half. So that's, that's a bad level of service. It's a level of service E or F during the morning peak period. So during the afternoon peak period, making that left turn, it's definitely a level of service F. So that's for the travel time. And the last slide shows you the, this, this is the result of the license plate tracking survey. We also tracked the vehicles that entered parking lot B, and you see it's 22 vehicles that we're talking about. I'm not saying that none of those 22 will shift, but the majority will stay on their route that they are today, meaning on Maxwell. So the conclusion is that that number of traffic that we have today on Olden will remain basically the same, you know, very close to what it is today, in the range of 600, 700, up to 860 up at the northerly portion of Olden Lane. I want to respond to the point that Mr. Simov made, that I said that, you know, there's no problem today. And yes, that's no problem today. There's no significant problem today, but that's based because, basically because we have four access points. The Institute has four access points today. One is, you know, from College and Springdale. The second one is from Olden. The third one is from Battle and the fourth one is from Maxwell. The fact that we have four access points does make it much better everywhere. Nobody has to carry all of the traffic that we're talking of. And in terms of the percentage of truck traffic, 5% is, you know, maybe a little bit high for residential street, but these days, all residential streets, they see more truck traffic. You know, the UPS, the Federal Express, I've driven recently several times through the neighborhood to kind of understand and see what's happening. You always see truck traffic, commercial traffic on the residential streets, landscaping contractors. There's always a truck with a trailer and a mowing that you can see either on Olden or some of the side streets. So not all that traffic that we're talking about, the 5% truck, is, is Institute truck traffic. I think there, so from my point of view, I don't see a justification for this drastic kind of restrictive traffic pattern. I think there are other solutions in terms of traffic calming that can be done along Olden and that probably should be investigated in conjunction with the town to make sure that the traffic remains slow. That's the most important point. And that's basically my presentation. I'm sure you have questions. I'll be happy to answer the questions.
David?
I find the license plate tracking study really interesting. Did you do that going the other direction? In other words, do you see people going from lot A out on Olden to take advantage of the light or did you not study it?
No, we did not because, you know, in the other direction, we know that a larger proportion of traffic does use Olden. So we were not concerned there that there would be a shift to Olden because most of the traffic is on Olden already.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Anyone?
One more question. I'm not, not sure it's for you, but in reading the report, I guess this is more for Mr. Griff, and you sort of made light of, you talked about the Pepsi delivery truck, you know, running this route that takes it through the residential neighborhood, and you've demanded that they reroute, and they haven't responded yet. You said, but Coke does the same thing anyway. And I guess, I'm curious, do you know that Coke does the same thing anyway? Because I would think a way to get movement out of Pepsi would be to say, we're going to change vendors.
Well, first, we don't use Pepsi. So we, we know that Pepsi services a golf course and, but to your comment on Coke, we, you know, I, I've been pretty upfront in our, the difficulty we have with delivery firms that use GPS to route themselves, particularly when we, we know they're going potentially to the golf course or the university. We have asked, and we continue to ask, we know who they are, but they often are different drivers and are on a route that's timed, and it's just, it continues to be a challenge. We think those are minimal in the overall scheme of things, but it, I don't have, I wish I had an easy answer for it. It's, it's not an easy thing to address.
Let me just clarify. I got the sense from the report that you're, that the Institute was one of the stops on their circuit, and you're saying that's not the case.
We, we don't use, we don't use Pepsi, no.
But I think his point was, there are, whether it's Coca-Cola or Pepsi or FedEx or these people who go from the university to the seminary to the Institute, they, they're on a GPS-driven route, and they're hard to tell what to do. But we're trying to find ways.
And I-
Firing them might be one way.
Jenny? When did you get Google to change, and did that have an impact? It seems like that would have a major impact.
We did, we did that actually before the last planning board meeting. We called them to ask them to change our point on the map. I don't, I don't know if there's a way to really measure what the impact of that was, but I can tell you that I tested it myself from down in Palmer Square. I put the GPS on to take myself back to the Institute. And when I purposely turned on Olden, it redirected me immediately onto Battle to try to get me over to Maxwell. So it told me to go straight through Olden, and when I ignored it, it told me that to make, you know, to make a left turn and get myself over to Maxwell. So I do know that it's working.
Am I also have, I, I don't, general questions now?
I did just want to finish up, Mr. Jacomart, just, just to point out that he did a report which contains this information, which is in the file, and it's part of the record.
Any, any other questions?
Can we mark this PowerPoint as a two?
By, well, the whole set. It's, it's a continuation of A1, but if it's A2, that's fine. It's the more slides.
So this, these were part of A1?
They're, they're electronically, they're going to go to Eileen as one package, but they're A1, A2, whichever you like. So that concludes our remarks. I gather that the team here would like to speak to you, and so that's fine with us.
Fine. Let me just ask you, because I, I'm, the, one of the points I'm not clear on is, at what point the, was the plan that's been presented by the objectors tonight presented to the Institute, or is this, or was it?
We, we spoke about it last week, late last week. We were presented with the drawing yesterday. It's, it's fine. We, we have voiced very clear concerns about it, as you have.
Last Tuesday or this Tuesday?
Yeah.
Do you think the drawings were presented on Tuesday? We had the meeting, my phone on the set, discussing them yesterday.
Okay.
It's, it's, we, it's, guys, guys, we can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Yep.
We, we got, we got the, we got the drawing. We, we had conversations. We've had nice talks with lots of folks. We don't particularly admire the concept.
Just to establish it though, the drawings were delivered on Tuesday of this week, we believe. As Brad Mitchell just said, there was a discussion on the drawings on Tuesday with both sides. On the seventh, yesterday, sorry. On the seventh last week, there was a discussion on the concept of the cul-de-sac prior to the drawing being created. So I hope that establishes the dates.
So if it's acceptable to the chair, let the gentleman finish up, and then I'd like to wrap up it for us.
I think, I just have one question, I think for Tom, on the plan which moves the, Mr. Simoff's moving of the parking lot. I think last time you testified that your attempt to put it there, put it in the floodplain or in something like that, and you couldn't create that at that location.
Mr. O'Shea responding?
Yeah, it, it was more in the floodplain, stream corridor, and wetlands.
And is that your testimony as to this drawing, is the part of this being in that?
Yes, and I just, I would just like to say, since the June 15th meeting, we received the NJDEP permits for the original plan as submitted to the town.
Okay. Yes. Sorry, but I'd just like to ask one follow-up, which is, with the reduced number of parking spaces that are proposed in the latest plan, the 77 instead of the 99, would that number of spaces be able to fit in that other location, the location off of Einstein Drive? Just, because I know your concern, you didn't say you couldn't put the parking there, but it wouldn't be an efficient layout of the parking.
The, the layout in the Simoff plan doesn't have a lot of the things that the town-
That's not what I was asking about. I was asking about-
But, but it leads to that, is their plan doesn't have landscaped islands between the parking space. So our plan, though maybe not as long, is wider. And if you look at our plan, it sblays out to provide landscaped islands in between the parking, so it would not fit in that area. Our design wouldn't fit in that area for that reason.
Your revised design?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, I have a few questions. And I would also like to recall our witness to address some of the points made by Mr. Jacomart. But my first question for Mr. Jacomart is, apparently you said, if I'm not mistaken, you said in slide one that there was a total amount of traffic of 100 in the morning, a.m. rush hour, and 100 in the afternoon rush hour. Is that correct?
In the morning is 104, 104 vehicles entering in the morning, peak hour, peak 60 minutes, and 94 vehicles exiting in the afternoon peak hour.
So you did not take into account traffic at social events at night, say at 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock at night, concerts, weddings, bar mitzvahs, lectures, that sort of thing?
This is strictly the peak hour. Most of these events that you mentioned, they happen after the working hours. They happen in the evening, on, on weekends, and generally they are not, you know, of concern when it comes to peak hour traffic.
Okay, so the peak hour number really doesn't relate at all to the social events calendar?
There may be some social events in there, but not a significant number.
Not many at 8 o'clock in the morning, I guess. Also, I believe you said that the total number of social events is not going to change in the future, or words to that effect? Do you recall that testimony?
Correct.
Forgive me, but how do you know what's going to happen in the future in terms of future social events?
It's, it's based on statements that were done by the Institute.
Which statements?
I discussed it with the Institute. I asked questions, whether these events may change as a result, and the, the answer was that basically the same kind of events would occur in the future.
Same kind of events, but we're talking about number of events.
And number of events as well.
So you had a conversation with someone at the Institute?
Just, if, if I may, you weren't here at the last hearing, but there was testimony from the Institute representatives regarding the number of social events. So I just don't want to have you bludgeon Mr. Jacomart about that.
Well, I promise not to hurt him.
Okay. But if you'd accept the fact that there was testimony that the number of social events would not increase, that's, that was the testimony from these folks, not him.
Well, forgive me, but that's somewhat incredible, the notion that the, the Institute is not going to increase the number of social events when they're increasing their facilities so that they can have more social events.
Well, I, I've heard several of you say they're increasing their facilities. I, I, the board heard testimony as to what this building is for, so.
I think the other response to your question is that the, now, we had two counters out there for quite some time, a whole, more than a week. And in fact, twice we installed two counters on Olden to verify the daily traffic. And those counters did include the events that occurred during those weeks. So when I mentioned the daily traffic of 620 to 840, that volume does include the events that occurred during those weeks.
But again, I really, I would say to this board that I think it's, it's rather difficult to accept that there will be no, there will be zero increase in social events conducted by the Institute in the future. Next year, year after, two years later, 10 years later, I think that's, it's not a conservative assumption. One should assume some degree of increase in the number of social events in order to get a realistic view of the traffic impacts. I mean, that's what planning's all about. I would like to call Mr. Simoff to offer some comments on the testimony he's heard so far, if I may. You remain under oath.
Yes, I'd like, I was here at the last application for the kitchen expansion, and that seemed to be the focus of the, of the, the board and the applicant and the objectors was truck traffic. This is a new application where they're adding 100 parking spaces to the facility. And clearly, one has to believe that the addition, so the, the first application was, the last application for the kitchen expansion was deemed a minor, and there were all kinds of conditions and representations as to truck traffic. Irrespective of whether those goals have been met or, or discussed, this application is a new, is a, is a new application where there's an addition of 100 parking spaces to the facility.
Well, I think the testimony we've heard is that those are replacing existing spaces. It's just not 100 new, but 100 being moved. So, I mean, that's your premise, but I think what the board heard was that these aren't new spaces.
Yeah, and the other comment I'd like to make is that the, I understand the time studies and the, the routing that Mr. Jacomart did, but that doesn't, that doesn't answer the question of the character of the roadway, the, the through traffic on the roadway. And then I'd like to quote from the RSIS Table 4.2, where it says, "Residential street hierarchy definitions." And residential access is the lowest order, other than rural street type, of residential streets. Provides for frontage for access to lots and carries traffic with destinations or origins on the street itself. Then it goes on to say, "Residential access streets of loop configuration," and I would suggest that this is a loop configuration because Olden loops with Springdale may be classified as a single residential access street, but the total volume of traffic generated on the loop should not exceed 150, nor should it exceed 750 at any point along, along a traffic concentration. So the, the fact that this is a loop configuration, it exceeds 750 with the existing facility, and I would suggest that by reorienting the traffic to Olden Lane, it's going to increase the traffic to Olden Lane. I think it's clear that the, I, I, I offer the, the, the fact that perhaps my sketch was not totally agreed to by the Institute, but I would request that we, we come up with some solutions so that the neighbors aren't here at every application.
I just have a few comments by way of summation. I, I do want to just hark back for a moment to, you know, the Battlefield project, which really represented a kind of clash of cultural viewpoints, and it wasn't really reconcilable as a planning matter. Eventually, it resolved in different ways, which is very good for everyone. This is not that kind of case. This is not in a reconcilable conflict. I think everyone here is exactly on the same page. You've heard from every neighbor who spoke that they value and treasure the Institute, not only as an idea, but as an active part of the community where they live. So we're not in a situation where there's this irreconcilable banging of heads that we can't solve. These problems arise because of the success of the Institute, which our clients actually value in this instance. It is no, nothing that we can't solve. But the problem that the neighbors experience is unique in this part of the community, and I'll take slight issue with Jenny's thought on this point. Because here we have this final destination, so to speak, of an institution literally in the back of a residential neighborhood. What goes in, goes through that neighborhood with its point of terminus at the Institute. I live on, off Snowden, and I can tell you, I know many people who cut through Braeburn and do all sorts of things. We're not in that situation. We're talking about a very unique part of the community where that traffic enters specifically crossing a residential neighborhood. It has no choice, obviously. And so we need to find ways of mitigating those impacts. It's not a matter of fighting the Institute. It's a matter of the quality of life for people in that neighborhood. There's no option but to face this problem. As the Institute grows and succeeds, burdens grow on the neighborhood. And the essence of planning is to find a solution to that. And that's why we've at least come up with this proposal to deal with the burden on Olden. Now, Mr. Jacomart made a very interesting comment. He said that going in in the morning, 43% use Maxwell, 45% use Olden, and the rest is scattered on a couple of other streets, Springdale, et cetera. Going out, however, only 30% use Maxwell, and it jumps going out to 54% at Olden. And so that traffic light at Olden, right now, is not discouraging exiting traffic through Olden. What we're seeing is an increase of 9% right now in exit traffic above those who use Olden coming in. And that's with parking lot A feeding in the middle of the campus onto Einstein. So even though parking lot A is now on Einstein, we still have a very significant increase in traffic from that lot choosing Olden despite the traffic light. Now, what is logically going to happen when the entire lot is feeding onto Olden and is no longer feeding on Einstein? What's obviously going to happen, if there's already a nearly 10% differential in use of Olden when the lot is already on Einstein, when it moves to Olden, obviously that usage on Olden is going to jump even more. And so we are seeing a plan that is inherently got a poison pill, so to speak, for the people in that neighborhood. We're already seeing increased exit usage on Olden of a very substantial degree while the lot is feeding onto Einstein. When we put it on Olden, it's all going to go on Olden, or at least most of it. It's already increasing there now, though it's not feeding on Olden already. So it's obvious that this plan is going to put a greatly increased traffic burden on Olden, despite the difficulty of exiting with a light, because people are already doing that. They're already choosing Olden. So this is an inherent flaw in the plan. No one objects to the Commons buildings for what they are and the, and the idea of having meetings there. The problem is the burden it's going to put on the community. The problem is the burden it's going to put on the community. Now, a couple of other comments I do think bear noting. David mentioned the issue that, well, we don't get rid of all the traffic through this plan, obviously. And I don't think Mr. Mann meant to say everything goes away. What's going to happen, however, is by changing the conception of feeding this lot only onto Olden, we're going to greatly reduce that pressure. We're not going to get rid of traffic to the nursery school, the daycare. We're not going to get rid of the member traffic on that part of Olden. But we're obviously going to shift a lot of existing traffic and minimize that increase that's going to happen. So we don't say get rid of all the traffic in Olden. It's not going to happen. But this concept we're offering, and there may be other variations. Louise, I think, started to ask, well, are there other ways of limiting certain traffic using Olden rather than all traffic? And of course there are. This is one concept. The institute hasn't responded with any willingness to consider other mitigating factors, such as limiting commercial traffic using Olden. We're not hearing any response of that nature as a permanent matter. Now, the institute has made an effort to tell its contractors that it is going to fine them, these are the construction contractors, but that doesn't go so far as to deal with the normal commercial traffic feeding into the institute. So there are other ways of addressing this, even if the cul-de-sac option is not acceptable to the board. But what is clear is this plan right now does not address how to mitigate on a permanent basis the increased burden on Olden, on these neighbors. And that's the problem we see, and it's a very real problem. The question Jenny raised about whether it's difficult for commercial vehicles to make that left turn from Maxwell onto Mercer is already answered, because the institute says it's telling its construction traffic to use Maxwell. So they've already accepted the principle that it's safe to do. So this concept of directing that traffic, at least during the day, would mitigate a huge burden, and it is not unsafe because the institute itself is agreeing to do it with construction traffic. So we have a plan right now that, despite the good intentions of the institute, doesn't solve the problem. I was asked by one of my clients to make the following point, that despite what the institute is presently doing, we've heard testimony that clearly says there is significant construction traffic still coming down Olden. So the voluntary measures the institute is using, which are appreciated, are not yet working, not to the degree we need to protect people. The other point I want to raise is that the counters that Mr. Giacomo referred to were done in January and February. Most of the institute's events, its seasons, so to speak, are from March to June. In fact, there's a document in the record listing the institute events and the numbers of people who attend. I think all of them are from March on. So the institute and Mr. Giacomo's firm took the counters at a time when the events are not usually taking place. So those counters are not an accurate depiction of the traffic from events. Now, if we move this lot to Olden, we're going to get those event visitors, who are not daytime working visitors, all using that lot. And they're all going to go right out onto Olden because they don't know the neighborhood if they're from outside of the community. And they're going to take Olden and go right out. That's human nature. So we have a plan right now that, despite good intentions, is not solving the problem in the neighborhood. In fact, it's going to enhance that problem dramatically. And so we would urge you not to approve this plan tonight. We would not say you need deny it yet. I think really there should be further study by staff as to options that we've presented. In addition, Ms. Sarosol presented data of hundreds of incidents of high-traffic intensity that the board has not yet been able to review. That was given to the clerk. It's not been seen by the board yet. It was not distributed, and it needs to be studied by the board and by staff. So we would say it's not yet ready to approve this plan. There is evidence in the record the board has not yet been able to consider. There are also serious discrepancies in the institute's presentation, and I've summarized some of them just now. I don't know if Mr. Potter has any summation, but I just want to thank you, and especially I was impressed by the probing questions of the board. And it actually helped me in preparing my summation just now. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you, members of the board. I appreciate your stamina and your diligence and staying awake at all times. You really do a public service, and I thank you. And I recognize that, even though we don't always agree. And I've been for this planning board years past, several times, and we didn't always agree, but I always respected you. I just want to say this, that in all the nice slides that you saw from Mr. Grip and his comments, and Mr. Giacomo and his slides, one thing you did not hear anyone say, and that was that the solution proposed by Mr. Semov does not work. At most, they were hinting that it wasn't needed, but none of them said it won't work, that it won't solve the problem. Now, I know one of my favorite quotes from John F. Kennedy, actually quoting Walter Ruther, was, "All of our problems are caused by all of our solutions." But that doesn't mean we shouldn't try to find solutions. We need to do that, and the best way we can do it, I think, is in a collaborative process, rather than through generalities about, well, we'll try to find some calming devices for Olden. Let's come up with solutions that actually will work and minimize the problems, even if they can't be 100% workable. We can improve the situation. And in terms of the setting of policy, I think this is the correct precedent. Here is a way to solve a major problem on Olden that is a safety issue. Let's try it, and let's first get together with the experts from the township, and then let's see if we can't sit down and work this out, because it's only been a week that we have had this concept planned produced. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I always like, whenever I can, to agree with my friend, Mr. Affran. Now, if I heard him correctly, he said, "Nobody objects to the Commons Building."
Not what I said.
It's exactly what you said, unless I could be wrong. Nobody objects to the Commons Building. We're here...
We're objecting because of the problems we pointed to. We are objectors.
Thank you. The application before you is for the Commons Building, a 20,000-square-foot building with two to five new employees. The testimony was that there will be no more events held at the institute because of that building than are held there now. So it's conforming in all respects. One, variance was sought for the shortening of the length of parking spaces, which you grant routinely to keep permeable surfaces. Otherwise, it conforms in all regards. Mr. Grip arrived in 2015, and the first thing he did on a voluntary basis was redirect the construction trucks to Maxwell. It had nothing to do with any application, any condition of approval. They just did it. So everything that's gone on since then has flowed from voluntary action to work with the neighbors on Olden and the other streets, and to put the construction and delivery traffic onto Maxwell where it's, even though large parts of it are public street, most, if not all, of the residents are institute faculty members. So the institute chose to bear that burden. Nobody objects to the Commons Building. The institute has redoubled its efforts here, a dozen new action steps, activities. Ms. Wilson, I love the concept of the capillaries. I mean, if we have capillaries, although Maxwell's becoming sort of a vein, but there are four entrances. It's logical to have four entrances. The primary entrance and exit for the construction and the delivery truck traffic will always be Maxwell. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Jenny? Go ahead. Okay. I'm not. One question, maybe it's... Well, I have two questions. One is, would it be possible, and I don't know if the other board members would go along with this, but to prohibit delivery vehicles on Olden on a permanent basis? Because that would take away the truck traffic on Olden, which is a narrow road. So I don't know if that's possible, and then we could put a little... If there could be a sign put at Olden and Mercer, "Institute deliveries, please use Maxwell Lane."
Well, I mean, it seems to me difficult to prohibit them just for the institute. I would think you would need to close the road to... I mean, there was even discussion about this, that they were thinking of going to the council for an ordinance to close Olden to all commercial vehicles.
Okay, yeah.
And if you think the council would entertain that, that'd be great, but I don't think it's something we can weigh in on, even.
No, and I mean, in fact, I wanted... I think one of the trucks that someone mentioned was Blue Apron, and I think that's a service that goes to houses and brings food. Well, what about just a voluntary sign on the corner that says, "Institute deliveries, please use Maxwell"?
It's a lover's lane. There are a number of signs.
There is a sign?
Yeah, in your booklet, the compliance.
Well, that's a construction sign right now. It's construction vehicles, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, it says commercial?
It does say construction traffic.
But could that be made permanent?
Our intention was that they be permanent. Permanent, yes.
So it could be delivery vehicles, not, I mean, or...
Whatever you want.
I think that seems like...
Commercial vehicles servicing the institute.
Yeah.
Well, if... Pardon, but if that is the wish of this board, I would think that, and I don't agree that it is, but I would certainly think that this board does not have the authority to do that. That's a decision that would have to be made by council. And so, you know, in one of your council meetings, you might want to bring that up, but that certainly doesn't come under the purview of this board.
Well, I think maybe it might, as a condition of approval, you might want to... This board might want to recommend to the council.
It sounds like the applicant's amenable to it. Anyway, one at a time. It sounds like the applicant's amenable, so I don't see why we shouldn't just memorialize that. They've already offered it.
Well, right now, it's construction, so I think that's different.
But Mr. Tar...
Because I think even right now, probably, the Coke delivery might not be... Right? Because a Coke truck isn't a construction truck.
Mr. Semov was kind enough last hearing to point out that those signs are not legal highway signs. There's an issue there that you're going to have to take up with council and counsel, legal counsel, and tell us what to do.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes.
Not only should it be done there, but there are studies that need to be done by staff that, and things, you know, to show evidence why this would be done. So I'm not saying in the long run it would not be, but staff has to do a lot of studies, and you know how these things are done. And I just don't think... I don't think as a planning board that we ought to make that decision tonight, even though we have sat through meetings, this is the second at least, maybe more, you know, to discuss that.
Well, I had another sign issue, and that's... And I wanted to know if the other board members felt about this also. The sign at Maxwell for the institute is really pretty small, and it's very tasteful. And I wonder if a more prominent sign at Maxwell might encourage more people to... It might be a small... I mean, I'm all for small, tasteful signs, too.
It's hard to read it when you're speeding, right?
But I wonder if a more prominent sign might also help make that entrance seem more like the entrance. Tim?
Once... Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd be happy to... You know, we voluntarily put those signs up. We worked with Mr. West, the size, the color, the shape, and the wording. So if, at the discretion of the town, they would like us to consider something different, we would take that on board.
Maybe neon with a big arrow. Again, acknowledging that I don't know the staffing at IAS, but it seems to me that one of the concerns is event traffic on exiting onto Olden is... Can be remedied with people flag people, flagging people to go in their cars and go the other way down Einstein to Maxwell and not going through the neighborhood. So it seems to me that there's... There are staffing solutions as well as... That are... That might be considered rather than engineering solutions. Engineering can solve many problems, but there's a human element, especially, as I mentioned before, at times when schoolchildren are present. And if there's concern that I noticed on Planet Princeton that, you know, the concert schedule that's been posted is pretty exciting. It seems to me that the traffic exiting that parking lot, the new parking lot, could be managed and encouraged to go the other way.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add to Jenny's comments. So that's exactly what I was going to say. I feel like the signage for the institute needs to be a little bit more prominent, the main entrance, to let people know that this is the main entrance. But also, I think that in terms of the Olden Lane, I guess, entrance, or I guess, street signage, I don't know if it necessarily needs to be, you know, municipal sign. I know that the university, for instance, has signs all over that, you know, Princeton University has signs all over that direct traffic in terms of deliveries and other things. And so maybe if, you know, there can be an agreement with the municipality or the property owner on the corner there, I don't know who lives there, but, you know, maybe there can be a sign that says, you know, "All traffic to the institute go to Maxwell."
Yes. Mr. Soler?
If it helps in terms of the signage, because you mentioned the university, and I think that's a good example, that was approved by mayor and council. The university came, and Mildred is right. I mean, those types of decisions are typically in front, because they're putting signs in the right way.
But just to make things easy, it would be good if the council... If the planning board would have the discussion, because the council's going to say, what did the planning board think?
They didn't say that, I don't think, with the university we're finding. They wanted control.
And also, one final thing about signage. I know that signage isn't going to solve all of our problems, but I do feel like, you know, this concept is going to cause a lot of problems that we can't really foresee. So I'm not crazy about this, but I think that in terms of people leaving the parking lot, you could potentially have a sign that says, you know, "Take Maxwell," you know, point to that direction, exit that way.
To be clear, when you say this concept, you meant the neighbors' proposal? Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yes. Ms. Alman.
I'd love to try to get this whole discussion back to the Commons Center of the application, which is the Commons. And I think we probably all agree that that seems like a good idea. I think we're all agreed that Olden is dangerous. It's narrow. It has no sidewalks. It has enough room for about one and a half cars. It's just dangerous. It just is. Now, if all the neighbors want to move their houses back or have their front yards cut off so they can make the road bigger, I mean, those aren't options. And I don't think it's easy to solve this problem. I think it is dangerous. I think it's particularly dangerous for kids. I don't know that there is a solution. I don't like the opponent's proposal. I think it is draconian. I think it does serve the interests of the neighborhood. It doesn't serve the interests of the town at large, in my view. I think that we... I believe that the institute's testimony... I believe you when you say you're only going to have X number of occasions in the future. I don't think the guesses that we would make make sense. I also think that the steps that the institute has taken as a result of the neighbor... I also think that the steps that the institute has taken as a result of the neighbors' conversations with them and in this place are reasonable. I don't think you can make it perfect, but I do think that these have been reasonable. Most of the rest of us live in heavily trafficked neighborhoods, so perhaps we're not as sensitive to a very suburban, quiet neighborhood as we might otherwise be. But I do think that this is all compromise, and the institute can only do so many things, and it strikes me that they have made a good start. If the town, in its wisdom, wants to take on the larger issues, I think they should. I mean, I think there are questions, but you're not going to make Olden Lane wider. You just can't. And you may get a sidewalk in, that would be certainly nice, but again, it would be a problem. And I think that you're going to have to think about traffic calming of some kind. And I don't know how we refer that to the council, but we've got at least two members of council right, sitting right here, so I think they can carry that word back. So I think we should move.
Okay. Is it, yes, Louise?
Did you have a comment first? You looked like you were about to...
I was, but actually, Gail said almost everything that I wanted to say. Not that, not that I agreed with everything you said, but most of what I wanted to say you said, so.
Or was there any?
So I think the one question that I would ask is, I do think that the idea of getting a sidewalk all the way from the institute up to Mercer Street should be a high priority. I don't know, you know, if we can condition the approval on making that happen, or when it's an off-tracked improvement, if it's something that, you know, the engineering department has to implement, and we can only put on a condition that they have to make a contribution to it. But I would like to have some kind of a condition in the approval, and I would, you know, move the approval of the application, but I would like to have some kind of a condition to try to expedite the installation of that sidewalk.
I'll second that as a, kind of a formal proposal for the rest of the...
A minute, are you, you're talking as though you're making, you're making a motion and seconding.
Well, I just wanted to, I mean, I also agree that that would be a, I would suggest that condition for...
Could you restate it, just so we...
David, go ahead.
Was that a contribution for...
It was David's idea.
Was it the contribution that the applicant voluntarily talked about the $50,000?
Was that the number?
Well, that was for traffic calming, this is for the sidewalk.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would...
Neither.
Right, but David's, I don't think David's talking about that contribution.
To be clear, either, either way you wanted it, any kind of traffic calming, including a sidewalk, either.
With a dollar amount?
Fifty thousand.
Is that okay?
And that's voluntarily, because I'm not sure we can impose it.
Volunteered.
Okay.
But may I have the floor for a moment? Because Mr. Afron made the point that we had an Exhibit 01 submitted that the board did not see, and I want to just summarize it, if I may. It's a set of entries from July 15, 2016, to September 14, that's today, at 8:00 AM, of inbound and outbound commercial vehicles stating the time and the names on the vehicles, apparently on information compiled by seven or eight neighbors who testified that this is information they supplied for this, this exhibit. Does the board have any questions about this? I just want to be sure that...
About the, about the, about the Excel spreadsheet?
About this exhibit, yes.
Just the, it wasn't described sort of, it was described as observations of traffic, but there were no numbers or...
Well, in the testimony, I'm telling you, there, it includes the time, the place, the direction, and the description.
Okay. And the total...
I could read through it if you like.
The, the representation was that there were 380 entries. I think that's what I heard.
Okay.
And just to be clear, if I heard you correctly, that's 425 days, so that's less than one truck a day going...
Well, on some days, it's seven or eight trucks, on some days, it's, it's only a few, and then there are days when there aren't any.
It seems kind of weird.
I just want to be sure that if, since this was submitted as an exhibit, that the board is familiar with it, and it's part of the record, and what you understand.
I don't, I don't think it should be. I mean, I didn't, I haven't seen it.
Well, it is part of the record we did. I can give you an example of July 20, 2016, at 6:38. Oh, I mean, is it going to matter who, what the name of the truck is? Balder Chef's Warehouse, Mark Smallbox.
Can I interject for a second? I have a question for the objectors. Is this list represented to be exhaustive, comprehensive of all commercial vehicles that had traversed the street during that time period?
Just one second, please. Was my characterization of the document accurate for the objectors who submitted it? The, the answer I have, and I'm not sure, David, if this answers your question, is that the spreadsheet depicts the observations of the observers on the particular days that are indicated. They obviously weren't, couldn't be there all the time, as Chris said, 425 days. So it represents what they observed at the times and dates when they were there. So I don't have it in front of me. It's not a matter of saying, oh, there's one a day, as Chris suggested. They are looking at it at certain times and certain days and writing down what they see. Right. I mean, just so the board is aware that this was submitted and has a flavor for what it says. If the board requires any more detail on that, I'll respond.
But that, excuse me, but that also could be, if the town decides to pursue additional remedies to those that we've proposed, that information would be pretty useful.
Perhaps. I mean, some of the entries are tiger transit.
Oh.
And these aren't necessarily related. It's information. I just want to be clear that since it was submitted, that the board had an opportunity to question it or to have some flavor or detail as to what it, it says.
But I also think it should be pretty clear that the board didn't see it, it was just described. I mean, that...
I, I think it's also important to recognize that the information is not sufficiently detailed for us to draw any conclusions from it. I mean, even if we had seen and had a chance to study the sheet, we don't know, as Mr. Afron just answered my question, how many more vehicles there were at times when the street was not being observed. We don't know what changes in, in volume were achieved through the various institute measures that they took to try and reduce the traffic. So I think that, you know, there's a lot of information, a lot more information that would be needed in order for it to be really pertinent to the decision.
I think the conclusion is that if you, if you observe Olden throughout that period, there is truck, a commercial vehicle, including vehicles presumably going to the institute, as well as buses and garbage trucks, and that just is, is the testimony that there is commercial traffic on Olden that during this timeframe of over a year.
I would just like to just note, I assume, Alan, you're looking at the copy, the board, obviously, there's only one copy, so the board hasn't seen it, but you're summarizing for the board, is that fair to say?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
All right. It is now 10 to 11, and I'm going to ask the board, do you want to have more discussion? Do you feel that you're at the point where you could make a motion? Do you want to wait?
I'm, I'm ready to vote, but I do want to just say a couple of things. I certainly, yeah, that's on, it's just not right in my face. Sympathize with the neighbors, it's infuriating when rules and regulations are ignored and it affects your quality of life. And I strongly support the signage and the restriction on deliveries off of Olden. I don't support cutting off access there. I think the sidewalk is a great idea. I think strict speed enforcement is a great idea. And I wonder if there's a way to engineer the driveways, the ingress and egress off of Olden, in a way that makes it really difficult for truck deliveries to happen. I mean, obviously, emergency access is important, but can you, can those driveways be, either narrowed or spiked? I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, maybe there's an engineering solution or partial, just one more sort of belt and suspenders approach to making, making it crystal clear that deliveries don't happen to the main campus off of Olden. With the understanding that they're still going to be happening to that portion of the facility that's on the east side of Olden. That's all.
Anyone else?
I'd, oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. I was just going to quickly say, I mean, I think that's a great idea. I mean, if you narrow the roads, I mean, I think that it will, I guess, teach the truckers or deliveries a lesson, you know, after the first few times, and hopefully they'll learn. But yeah, I mean, at the same time, it's not super draconian in sense.
Can I just ask a question? Was there testimony, there is, there's no signage at those entrances now, is there?
Which entrances?
One's off of Olden. Is there a signage there?
Einstein and Olden.
About no commercial entrance?
Yeah, you, in your booklets, you've got photos of all of the signs.
At the, at Einstein off of Olden?
Right, outbound, it says, go this way. It go, don't go up Olden, go out Einstein, on the campus.
At Olden and Einstein, there's no commercial traffic sign? And is that something to consider?
The question you're asking, is there a sign on Olden and Northern Einstein? Is that correct? There is no sign there. The signage that we have in place is at the corner of Lover's Lane and Mercer directing traffic to make a right.
So I'm asking whether it would make sense so that people who ignore that and come there realize that they shouldn't be entering, the commercial traffic should not be entering at that location, meaning they shouldn't be on Olden in the first place.
Were you to be so inclined to approve if the condition was that we work with your traffic engineer and your engineering department to craft signs that have the right wording on them, that are in the right locations? We've tried to do that, done it voluntarily in our own indication, but that'd be a perfect condition.
Including the one on Olden, I mean, and Mercer?
Yes. There's one on Lover's Lane now, there's, they're all over the place, but...
It would be helpful to have on Olden.
I wonder how my colleagues feel about condition, conditioning approval upon IAS coming up with an event management system that involves preventing exiting traffic from going on to Olden Lane. I, I mean, we, I, I live sort of near the stadium, and when there's a football game or any significant athletic event that has a major impact on the neighborhood, they have people blocking streets and waving people to where, which way they could go. I think this is a solution to the concerns, and I'd also wonder what my colleagues felt about a condition that IAS work with the neighborhood to ensure the safety of children who are being bused to school, to make sure that there's someone out there working to limit the, the, I'm sorry, it's been a very long day, to limit the speed of the vehicles that are using Olden Lane in the morning and in the afternoon when children are departing for school and arriving from school.
So just quickly, listening and talking here about the first item about event management, there's some concern on our part about sending visitors, people who aren't there all the time, out in the dark around to Mercer where there is no light. I hear folks talking, but the volumes about which we're speaking, leaving an event, large number that might be going to the south, know where they're going, go down Maxwell on their own, but if you put up a barricade and made everyone go out Mercer at 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night, there's some concern about safety. Perhaps we could refer that to the engineers and the traffic safety officer. If they found it was safe, we would consider it, but there's some concern here.
I share that concern. I think, I think you really should not be trying to make people who want to go south make a safe left turn on Mercer. You should not try to force all of those people out.
But there are other...
Let me just finish this up a bit. As someone who's been to concerts and has left from that parking lot at night, I can tell you that everybody heads down a different street, over, Haslam, down. So that the fact is, there really, the traffic on its own disperses itself rather sensibly. Some people go straight out to Mercer and cut up Lover's Lane, some people cut down that little, you know, place by the, I mean, people make intelligent choices.
Right. I'm more concerned about the schoolchildren, and Mr. Quinn is a previous Board of Education member, appropriately remembers that. When we were talking with engineering, I know they had an intern working this summer who was mapping all of the, the bus stops. It's a municipal and/or school board function to get them in safe locations. The sidewalk would be immensely helpful up to that stop. Putting an officer up there, I, my sense is perhaps we should do that on an as-needed basis, as Sergeant Murray directed us on occasion to go out, like the officers are going to stop trucks. We propose to keep that up on an unannounced occasional basis or as required by Sergeant Murray. So working with him and the Board of Ed, maybe they want to move the bus stop. I don't know.
Okay. Any other points for conditions? No?
Well, all the conditions that have been outlined in the reports that are not contrary to what the plans have been already amended to reflect. And that includes, I guess, the motion, if it is for the approval, is for the plan as revised and as revised again. It was an original revision, reducing the size of the building to something like just under 17,000 square feet. There is the issue of the roadway along the roadway that I take, it is now in the revised plan, and it's only on one side, and it's the reduction in the parking, the size of the parking lot, as well as the plan we saw today with the 15 spaces dispersed elsewhere on site. And as well as the various reports and recommendations with the, all of the landscaping issues referred to the landscape subcommittee, with satisfying Ms. Almond as to the representation as to diversity versus monoculture of, which was brought out last time. So the, the conditions, I think, are apparent from the, from the reports as well as the revised plan, and the, would include the voluntary contribution of $50,000 toward improvements or traffic calming, or however the municipality decides that can best be... calming, or however the municipality decides that can best be used. That would be an institute contribution, as well as, I guess, documenting the management plan that Mr. Gripp testified to, and making that plan a condition of approval, as well as probably asking that that plan be modified from time to time as issues arise, at best achieve the results that the board's been aiming for, and then, and the neighbors are aiming for.
All right. Well, so does that cover the signs, the exit signs in the parking lots toward Maxwell and the sign on-
All the signage would be referred to the staff and the traffic engineer to, to work out a plan with the institute for signage, with attaining whatever municipal approvals may be required for that, or whatever may be done without municipal approvals.
Okay. All right. Who would like to make the motion?
I'll move it.
All right. Thank you, David. Is this a second?
Second.
Okay. Well, Mildred, okay. It's been moved and seconded. Would you like to call the roll in that, please?
Mr. Crum?
Yes.
Ms. Crummiller?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
No.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mrs. Trotman?
Yes.
Mrs. Alman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, I'll move on.
Only a few. Yeah. Could I have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
I wish I'd known that before I got here, but I'm going to call it back.
I think it's super.
Call it back home again.
Yeah.
Well, no, actually, I guess I did.
Oh, yeah, they have to call it all home.
This is the institute.
I can leave that here.
Yes.